Well, I would like to call to order the special meeting of the South Burlington City Council of Monday on October thirtieth, twenty twenty three. We will not have the normal pledge of allegiance because we don't have a flag in this room. So we'll move on to item two. Um, instructions on exiting the building in case of emergency and lethal technology.
Thank you.
The agenda. Um, so for those in the room, thank you for joining us. Um, if there is an emergency, you can go down the, um, elevator staircase right here behind this room, or all the way to the left down the hallway downstairs. There is a place of refuge at that.
The hall.
Um, there is. Um, there is a place of refuge at the end of that hallway if you need to wait for somebody. Um, for those participating remotely, we have quite a crowd. Thank you for joining us. Um, if you're interested in speaking on an item on the agenda or during public comment, please either turn your camera on and then the chair will call on you, or indicate you'd like to, um, speak in the chat, um, and the chair will call on you. Otherwise, we are not monitoring the chat for content.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to item three. Are there any, um, additions, deletions, or changes in order of the agenda?
I would suggest or ask that we add to the executive session, um.
Yeah, my, my, could I, I would suggest you add a, a new executive session to the end of the council agenda.
Okay.
Since I think you're gonna do the initial executive session mid-meeting.
Okay.
Oh, okay, it's like item nine A.
One, yeah.
So nine A, we will add an executive session. Okay. Next of all, um.
You need to approve the agenda with that change.
Okay, so are there any other changes? Okay, so, um, tag on option to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Item.
Bye. So we have that added to our agenda. Then I'll move on to item four, which is comments and questions from the public. Um, on issues not related, that are not on the agenda. So we do, we, do we, we have a lot of people in the audience, so I'm assuming you wanna tell us something. So, we're all ears.
I, I will start. I'm gonna put on a phone call here. Sure, Lisa Angwen, on two ninety-four Golf Course Road. I try to work every single day with this in my backyard. I'm gonna play the whole day for you. Here we go, we get a little break, it's gonna start again, this was today. We're gonna listen to. And you approved this. My daughter, she had eight months, she had a concussion. I picked her up from school on Friday down at Skidmore College. I picked her up and you know what? I told her I could bring her home and hopefully it's a sunny day and seventy-one degrees, that the builders said that they wouldn't count that day. But you know what? They did. I called three times. She had a concussion. For goodness sakes, I couldn't bring my daughter home in a safe, quiet place. She had to listen to this all day long. Imagine waking up and this is what you hear. I am shaking. My kind of partner, Monday, could show up, he's like, you're a knockie, so I'm like, I am a knockie. You are approving this, you are absolutely avoiding the fact that there was a noise ordinance in this town. And this is ridiculous. I will leave it here for other comments or anybody else, and this will sit here and I will continue to repeat it for as long as this meeting's done. That sounds fun now.
Comment? John?
I would like to comment, but could you turn that off while I comment?
Do that for you, not for them.
Thank you, no, I, thank you.
It, it is obnoxious.
Actually, they should be hearing every comment with that.
That's why I wanted to.
Well, you know, I wanna be sure they could hear, you know.
That's fine.
This is why we're here, because we can't hear.
Well, we need to hear you. I, I think you've made your point.
Do you think I have? Because it's still happening, and this is like month number six or seven.
Well, I, I don't wanna have an argument. What I meant was, I can appreciate how obnoxious that is.
Can anyone hear me? Hello, can anyone hear me?
Judy, we can hear you, and.
I need to say something because I fully support what this woman is doing, but I have long COVID, and I will not be able to attend the meeting with that going on because I have extreme sound sensitivity, which is why I'm attending the meeting tonight. Um, and I fully support what she is attempting to do, but I, I, and I really wanna attend this meeting. That's fair.
We'll keep it up, that's fair.
I, I too, excuse me, Paula Cooper, Six Park Road, I too support this.
Can we have this a little more organized than just, I, we will hear everyone. We have a lot of people in the room and I.
Here's my chiropractor, he's here.
Typically, we, come on in, there's one more chair. Uh, we typically will go through everyone in the, in the room, and then make sure we hear from everyone online. And what we'd like you to do, so that people aren't just.
Yeah, but my heart is racing.
yelling out or speaking out, um, is.
I will have to leave the meeting if that keeps going on as much as I, I think it's a great idea. I can't, I'm, I'm feeling ill.
We're, we're, we're gonna, it won't be on again, Judy, so if you wanna listen to the other people, you can. But I'd like to have this in a orderly way, so we can both hear each other. I did not get your net name because of the noise. Mine?
Yes.
Lisa Angwen, thank you. Okay, and John?
Okay, so can we stay here or not? You know, you're small enough not to sit up here, do we?
I think, you can, can they stay there? I think this is, seems to be pretty sensitive.
It's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Um, very quickly, um, thank you first, thank you.
So please for everyone to know who you are.
Yeah, John Musange, five seventy-nine Golf Course Road. Um, thank you. Um, this is the second time I've been through this, the first time was, I think, two years ago when Black Rock was doing this, um, the same. And I couldn't believe it started up again. Because it went to Black Rock, we asked, they said, we're not gonna do that anymore here. I don't know if they're building that project or not, but when I started to hear this, I pulled out the ordinance, thinking there'd be something there, and I read through it. And you've read it many times, and it said, noise shall be deemed unreasonable when disturbs, injuries, and dangers the peace or health. And I thought unreasonable in peace and health, safety and welfare. For me, what the, how I define that is unreasonable is the length, the frequency, and the volume. And that's not defined in the ordinance somehow, and we've gotta figure out a way to do that. Because it's really, this is subjective and there's no teeth to it. Um, I then looked at the memos that we received October sixteenth from the city. And I appreciate those, uh, the first one was on the sixteenth. Recognize that property owners have the right to develop. And that didn't really join, didn't learn anything, that, I'm assuming they satisfied the LDRs. So that memo didn't create any clarity. The next one we received was the twenty-third, it said, the city's regulations permit construction noise between seven and nine, seven AM and nine PM. I couldn't find that anywhere in the noise ordinance, so maybe I missed it. But that's something we need to think about too, bookends for this. But the biggest thing for me, to deal with length, frequency, and sound and volume, the only way to measure decibels, that's lacking. And that's probably the best way to look at this. When you look at other ordinances, they do have decibels in their amount. I don't know what the amount is, but somehow you have to have that in there, so that there's a way to govern those three things. And I would ask you to really do that, to give this some more teeth and guidance for developers as well. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Please.
I'll speak. Hi, uh, my name is Amanda Hannah Ford. Um, sorry, I have an MRI scheduled on Thursday, so I'm trying not to get sick. Um, so I, um, I just wanna skip a third, what, what the two previous speakers.
I'm sorry, where do you live?
Uh, well, I live on thirty-seven Butler Drive. Um, so I'm on the other side, so it's everywhere. Um, and, um, so I would say since June twenty twenty, this has been ongoing. It started at nine seventeen this morning, um, and usually it's, sometimes it starts promptly at nine. Um, it used to start earlier in twenty twenty, it started early, it goes till five PM. Um, so we've experienced all-day jackhammering for months every year. The first two years of the pandemic, when my work was de-densified, and I was asked to work from home from time to time. It was a bit of joke with my coworkers, because when we were in a meeting, I would have to go downstairs into the basement bathroom, which faces the other way, and has a very small window, because that was the only room where I didn't disrupt meetings. And, um, I could hear people with earphones, but the minute I got off, um, I got off mute to participate, all people could hear was the jackhammering. Um, so earlier this year, I broke my knee, and I've been in, I was in a full-leg cast and non-weight bearing for twelve weeks. So during that time, um, I needed to get help going up and downstairs. I can only ride in the back of a car, so I worked from home. Um, and there were many times when I was unable to participate in meetings as I was expected to do because the noise was so loud that I disrupted people. Um, because I couldn't go into the basement bathroom. Um, so the noise impacts my ability to perform my job, to make a living, and my health and quality of life. Um, I watched the last, the video of last, the last city council meeting on ten sixteen, and during the meeting, Councillor Chalnick read from the South Burlington Noise Ordinance and said he thought the noise violated the noise ordinance. I agree. Um, I imagine if, well, I have a question for you. Um, if I purchased property next to Adam Hergenrother or Tom Hergenrother, and produced ninety-decibel jackhammering noise in a loudspeaker, um, would this be a violation of the noise ordinance? And do, and if, and that's question one. And if so, would the South Burlington Police enforce the violation? Or would planning, or would South Burlington allow me to continue making the noise while Paul Connor and Planning and Zoning met with me to discuss it for weeks on end? So those, I, you know, that, if, if that is the case, that if, that I as an individual citizen would be held accountable to the noise ordinance, and I don't understand why businesses are not, that's insane. Sorry, that was longer than I thought.
No, that's okay, thank you. Um, anyone else in the audience who would like to say something? Yes?
I will, I stand. Um, hi, councilors, uh, fellow residents. My name is Christina Griffin. I live on Golf Course Road. Um, I am, I'll skip restating the points that, that are many of their neighbors' developmentally made. Um, my home does not directly about Long Drive. I'm approximately point two miles away on Golf Course Road. The noise from the ledge removal was extraordinary and disruptive at my home all day, every day, uh, for many weeks during the initial site work in twenty twenty. It is again currently during the individual home sites preparation. Um, it also has the potential to continue for many more months for the seven remaining home sites. Um, I don't begrudge anyone's dream to build a home. However, unfortunately, there now exists conflicting conditions. That is, to permit building that requires extensive ledge removal and noise violates the interests and rights of others. So to that end, I'm here with wonderful South Burlington fellow residents with a call to action. The first is to please define what is the enforcement for this violation of the nuisance ordinance for excessive noise, and to please halt the ledge removal until there is a mutually respectful path forward, including considering approving home plans that do not have basements or pools. This would not be unprecedented in the neighborhood. In fact, the majority of all of the homes on Golf Course Road, on both the east and west sides, north of Long Drive, do not have basements. So it's not unprecedented. Um, thank you for all of your hard work and for leading with best intent, and also for listening to us tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Mark Brownlee, twenty-three O'Brien Drive. I'm gonna have a golfer up at the course. I hear the noise. It's great point about the decibel level, what is somebody measuring them and what are them? I'd heard there's no blasting allowed up there. Um, has somebody looked into, if they did blast for a short period, and that would get away from the jackhammering and shorten the duration, shorten it significantly? Is blasting something that makes the neighbors happy and get it over with quicker? And, and again, I'd heard that blasting is not permitted up there. So, just bringing that point up. And it's a huge nuisance. The noise is really unbearable if you haven't been up there to hear it. Thank you.
I think the blasting issue was one of the conclusions from the last time, that they couldn't blast.
I think it's the vibrations, I think it's too close.
Other people's homes.
All of O'Brien Hillside Farm One was done by blasting with a special agreement, with all this, looking to circle people, and a firm that did the blasting came in, did video recordings. Everybody had to sign a document.
Right.
It took extra money, extra time, but it was a quicker demolition of the ledge.
Right.
But.
Um, anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, Beth Ziegman, three thirty-eight Golf Course Road. Um, I spoke at the last meeting, I think my comments are still available online. I just wanna comment on the, uh, the idea of blasting. Blasting is not permitted on that site, it's my understanding, because of the tree protection requirement. There are protected trees on that site, therefore blasting is not allowed. Um, the tree protection area has been violated numerous times. I don't know what the enforcement mechanism is, and that's another point that I wanted to make tonight. It doesn't seem like, if you, if you rerun the tape from the last meeting, it doesn't seem like there's any clarity in the city, in the city hall, among the councilors and among the city staff about who has the power to enforce what. Do the police enforce the nuisance ordinance? Last time we, last time we were here, we were told that the Planning and Zoning Office had enforcement power with regards to the nuisance ordinance. Does Jesse Baker have the ultimate executive authority on the council? In an email exchange with one of the city councilors, that's what I was told. That is contrary to everything that I understand about the city government. The, the hired city manager from another town does not have executive authority over how the ordinances in this town are enforced. That's my understanding of it. So what I'm saying is that there seems to be just a general lack of communication or clarity among the members of the city council and the city staff on who enforces what, who has what type of power. Um, what recourse do the citizens of the town have when the ordinances are not being enforced? Is our only recourse to hire an attorney and sue the city? Um, it's, so, so these are some of the issues that I think are being unearthed by this problem. And I, as a, as a, as a member of this town now for four years, um, I personally would love to have some clarity on those issues. And also, I support everything that was said in this room. Um, this, this, um, Jo, this woman over here, Lisa Angwen, one of my neighbors. I appreciate the fact that you brought in the speaker and played that noise. Imagine that noise. I tell you, I measured it on my back deck. Now, mind you, I didn't hire a noise professional because the, the price quote that I got for that was nineteen hundred dollars to have a professional come in and measure the noise from my back deck. I measured it on an app on my phone, it was reaching ninety decibels, which is the limit that OSHA sets for, for having to put in ear protection. So I appreciate you playing that, imagine that at ninety decibels, eighty to ninety decibels, for eight hours a day, every single week, every, every single day of the week. Thank you for listening to me, um, that's all I have to say.
But I think it would be helpful for Jesse to respond.
This is public comment.
Oh, okay, all right. But in terms of your role, um, as the chief executive.
Yes, uh, uh, she, no matter where she lives.
She's not an elected official, she's not a chief executive.
We have a city manager form of government, she is our chief, chief executive. And I just want everybody very clear, that is our form of government, and we are a legislative body here. We certainly, and Andrew and I are looking at the, the noise ordinance, but that is a long-term solution. You're looking for a short-term solution, so.
We're looking for a long-term solution. There are seven, six to seven lots left to be developed on that property.
Right, right.
That's maybe ten months of this.
Fair enough, fair enough.
You're gonna answer this in twenty twenty. What's changed? So, we thought we had some agreements, I guess, number one. But let, I, I think we wanna hear from you, and then we can have a, a conversation and a discussion. We're gonna have a little bit of one in the executive session in terms of understanding some of this. But, um, we will be back with the public to, um, hopefully come up with, um, some solutions. Which I think it is trickier than it appears. But I totally understand your, um, your concern and frustration, and how long, how loud, and, you know. Thought we had.
It's detrimental to our health.
Uh, uh, I understand that you're kind of preaching to the choir here in terms of noise.
Someone has to be able to make a decision to cha, to stop it. Like, I don't, I guess I don't understand. I really.
Well, I think, that's why I think it's a little tricky.
Let us have the executive session, and hopefully we'll find more clarity after that.
I would appreciate it, thank you.
You know, I think there, everyone has legal rights, so we have to manage all of those when we make decisions. So, you would like to speak?
Only because you used the word tricky, and I wonder what that means. I mean, I think that we, the public.
Oh, can we have your name first? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just for the.
Well, I, I was only here in support of others speaking, but, um, I don't understand what is tricky about this.
Could you share with me?
And I thought maybe you would explain it. Ron, when done, I'm at fifty par.
Thank you. What's tricky, I just think things are more complicated, I guess that's what I mean. But there's complications.
She, does the public know what those complications are?
I don't know if I know all of them, but I think there's some legal ramifications when someone is given a, um, a permit to build, and then you suddenly make changes. I think there's a process for that.
Can I just ask?
Laws for, for most of us, I know not everyone follows them, but.
And I'm just concerned that everybody must have known there was ledge there.
I, I don't know how to answer that, because I don't, I, I have a lot of ledge in my yard. So, uh, that may be a kind of solution, identifying where ledge is and making decisions about building. That's why I think it's a little more complicated than just coming up with a season, just. I don't know what.
Can I just, there's a speakers list, as a member of the public, I'd like to participate in public forum.
Yeah, we will get to people on the, on the, um, who, who have entered electronically. We're dealing with the people in the, um, audience right now, and then you. We have a list of people who've indicated to, um, Jesse, who would like to speak, and I will call on you when the order I receive that. So we will hear from all of you, I promise.
Okay.
We have someone else who, right, yes.
Moscow, I want to say. Um, so, I'm on the front line of mental health in the state, and in the state of New Jersey, where I'm licensed, both states. And so I work remotely. So I, it's very hard to have clients right on the phone, and I'm talking them down from whatever they're needing to be talked down from. And I can't, like, focus or hear myself. So, and I'm still remote, so it, it is a problem in terms of my employment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's one thing. The other thing is, I'm wondering, I'm actually fearful of the other eight or ten lots. And I, I guess I'm wondering, who would know the answer to the question? Have those lots already been, um, okayed?
Permitted would be the term.
Yeah. Could you tell me yes or no?
I personally don't know that. Who can?
So, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I think these are great questions, and I think it would be really, um, useful to me if, if we could get all the questions on the table, and then we, I will respond with direction from staff um, tomorrow in writing to everybody. And I will put a piece of paper out with, for email addresses, if you haven't already contacted me, and I don't already have your email address.
Okay, great, so you'll answer, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, oh, um, can we use the backup?
Paul, can you get me a piece of paper, please? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just say one more question. Christina Griffin, Golf Course Road again. Um, I, um, thank you for committing to responding, because over the last three weeks, I've called and left three voicemails, and I've emailed your office, and I've gotten no, no email back, no phone call back. So, um, a communication back would be really welcome. Thanks.
Okay. John?
Just one moment of clarity. Um, seven lots are an issue, but I think we know, coming in the Golf Course Road, on the Wheeler property, there are thirty-two more homes that are gonna be built, and across the way, fourteen more. So the intersection there, and that is all ledge. We've been down that, it's all ledge on the ridge there. So you got thirty-two lots and fourteen on top of those seven. So it's, it's something we need to know ahead of time. I know you're not, it's, it's a lot more in the future. There's immediate problems, but there's something that will need to be clarified in the future.
I would agree.
There, you know.
I think that's a critical piece.
Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
If there is nobody else in the audience, we'll go to the screen, and then if. Oh, okay, Monica?
Yes. Monica Farrington, four Green Dolphin Drive, South Burlington. Been there almost fifty years. Long story short, would you give me an interpretation of number four, please? It says comments and questions from the public not related to the agenda. So if there's something on the agenda, are we not able to comment?
We would ask that you make your comments when we're having that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
That's what that means.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, um.
Hi, Amanda Hannah Ford again. I just wanted to follow up on John's, um, ledge. Um, quickly, on John's ledge comment.
Uh-huh.
And ask a question, um, which I'll also write down. But, um, my understanding from about blasting with dynamite is that it really isn't an answer. It might happen a little more quickly, but it sounds like the permit for the Wheeler Park parcel is three months of blasting every day. And so that's like ninety days of blasting. Um, and then there's the chipping up of the rocks and putting it, and it's, it's that it fits in a dump truck. So I don't really, it doesn't seem like, like, oh, we could just dynamite, then we wouldn't have a noise problem. So, um, I think that's an issue. Thanks.
Um, let's go to, um, Judy, we already heard from, right?
Yes.
Judy, did you wanna speak again, or? No? Okay.
I do, yes, um, I do. I wanna take a moment to represent the disability community. Um, everybody has spoken wonderfully about what's going on just from the perspective of somebody who has long COVID. Um, eh, you know, I went through twenty twenty, and, um, it was bad enough because I was already ill with dysautonomia, which causes extreme sound sensitivity. Uh, I have long COVID. Long COVID causes heart problems, sound problems. And I can only work a couple of hours a day now. When the sound goes, starts, I cannot function at all. It makes my heart race, and it caused, I have severe head pain. And I've e, I emailed about this. Um, so I lose the ability to do any work when I can work. So it's affecting me economically. But the other thing I wanna point out, and I do appreciate that that sound was stopped, and I thought it was important that you all heard it, but the minute, you know, when it went off, I had to stop and I had to take emergency medication. I, I just wanna give you a feeling of what it's like to live with that. Is my nervous system is unregulated because of long COVID. Um, and I'm living with that every single day. I live in fear of what's gonna happen with Wheeler because the blasting is gonna affect specifically, it'll come through Fox Run Lane, it's part of the, you know, the blast zone. And, um, I just, you know, ask you to step in the shoes of someone who's already ill, living with the impact of the sound. I know someone else here has a daughter with concussion. It's, 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 it's a nightmare. It's a living nightmare to live with that sound, because I, you know, it's, oh, okay, as soon as it starts, I have a migraine. My heart starts racing. It's not, it's, and you know, and it, and it, it's just. My heart starts racing. It's not, it's, and you know, and it, it, it's just like, it's, it's, I can't go to my office. I've been telecommuting for three years and I'm trapped here because there's nothing I can do when it starts. I can't drive, so I can't leave the house. I don't have a way to go and just get away from it for a little while. So I just wanted to share that when you're thinking about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. My daughter with long COVID, she's getting better, but she had quite a few months of that kind of medical condition. So I'm, I'm well aware.
It's been, it's been two years. So, you know, it's, and it's, like I said, I'm living in fear of the Wheeler development too.
Appreciate that. Dennis Barton, I think he's up next. He moved away from this table. All right. Well, then we'll go to Jim Lees and come back to Dennis. Oh, Jim Lees, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I've read this noise ordinance and I think it very well defines and provides power to the city to take action. And it says that it shall be unlawful for any person to make or cause to be made any louder or unreasonable noise. Then it defines unreasonable noise. Noise shall be deemed on reas, to be unreasonable when it disturbs, injures or endangers the peace or health of a person. I'll stop there. So we've got undisputed testimony today that it is unreasonable because it's disturbing, injuring or endangering the peace or health of a person. So now what about? Let's first go to what the ordinance provides for enforcement. It says police that for a violation of this ordinance, that violators are subject to an $800 fine for each violation and each day of violation continues as a separate offense. And police officers of the city of South Burlington are authorized to act as municipal officials to issue and pursue before the judicial bureau, a municipal complaint. And that's what it's called, a municipal complaint. So we have a mechanism of enforcement and the, the fees increase up to $800 by the time of the fifth day of the offense. Now we have in the United States, something called equal justice under law. And we have all kinds of court decisions prohibiting selective prosecution. You can't just have a law that you decide not to enforce. If there is a law and this ordinance is a law, it must be enforced. It isn't a matter of, well, we don't feel like it. I don't understand that. We have a constitution that you have as city officials pledged to honor. And it requires equal justice. You can't just say, well, they're a corporation or they. We all are persons and we have to have enforcement of the existing law. I don't think any word has to be changed in this to get this noise immediately put to a a complaint, a municipal complaint. And then it's up to, it's up to the people doing it to decide whether they want the, to pay the fines. And even after the fines, even if they ignore the, and, and pay the fines, the city can then still bring them and ask for an injunction. And as the court to enjoin their, so we have the law and we have the enforcement mechanism and we don't need anything else. So let's just ask the police to walk into the office of this perpetrator and give them this, what the police are authorized to do, provide the municipal complaint. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dennis Barton? Walk away again. There he is.
So I don't expect to testify. I'm here and just, just, just an advocate for some folks that we know that are neighbors and have been deeply disturbed by, by this constant noise that's created by this development. And this one individual has a disability and he needs his rest during the day. He's in long-term treatment for, for a physical condition. And it just seems like this is just a tremendous burden for not only him, but all other people that have been affected by this. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm not a resident of South Burlington, so I will abstain from further comment.
Okay. So our protocol, Dennis, is to have your microphone on mute. Otherwise.
Yes.
It means you want to speak. That's what we call it.
Yeah, I had it on mute. I don't know how I ended up there because I just signed in as DB. That's okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you had good testimony. Is there anyone else? All right, here are no more. We have a.
Yes, I, I have something to add.
Is this Paula Cooper?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm on Sixth Park Road. I'm directly across from this disturbance and I I have hyper, I have hyperacusis from chemo that I received from head and neck cancer. We moved back to Vermont the end of 19 and in 2020, the year preceded with the bang, bang, bang. So the noise level is very unbearable and it's definitely affected my mental health. And Christina has spoken eloquently on the situation. I appreciate that and that's all I, I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else up there? You caller four and five, but their mics are on, but I guess they don't want to speak. Okay.
Can I speak?
Who is, oh, Fred O'Neil? Yes, you may.
Hi, I live on Park Road and I've been a resident in the Burlington.
Can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, Park, Park, I mean Fred O'Neil has the mic. John?
Yeah, I've been a resident of South Burlington for 23 years. I lived in Butler Farms and I live in, on Park Road now. And I just want to say that ever since the Long Road development has gone into effect, it's been nothing but a problem. The trees, the developer was fined for the trees, the, you know, cutting down too many trees. I got a email, a couple of emails that said this, this banging would be done last week and it continues to be, go on. When, when is somebody going to hold these developers accountable for the disruptions in our lives?
Okay, thank you, Fred. Is there someone else now who would like to speak? Oh, I can't read that.
Yeah, I, this is Laura Waters. I I've got the black screen. Hi. I just want to express my incredible sympathy for all the people who have called in. We're, we live in Queen City Park and are struggling with the potential noise issues from the higher ground development that's going to be at the end of our road. And I would like to share this information with the folks if they're interested. We have somebody who's been giving us a lot of advice on noise and it's, his name is Les Blomberg. And he runs what's called Noise Pollution Clearinghouse out of Montpelier. His number is 802-229-1659 and he's an amazing resource. And hopefully if, if anybody wants to reach out to him, that he can be helpful to you guys. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Anyone else? Oh, Janet Bellevents?
John lost, could tell he's been leaving.
Pardon me? Oh, he did. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, he didn't have his screen. Okay, John, sorry.
Hi, that's fine. I had my hand up for a while. Not to repeat, I agree with most everything that's been said so far, just a couple of points that I wanted to make. Just as clarification, you are a governing body, not a legislative body. The executive works for the city council. So while you can't directly give Paul Connor work instructions, you can give Jesse Baker work instructions. She works for you. So if you want to do something, you can tell her and she will make it happen or she will tell you why she can't. And then you have to decide if you accept that.
Oh, absolutely.
She does work for you. Second point, I looked at currently there are two permitted properties and two built properties on Long Drive. If you pull the permits for all four of those, you'll see the two that were done, that have now been completed, that were done under, oh, what was the lady's name? Delilah. She actually had a piece of paper in there that said you have to follow the tree ordinance and it specifically said you have to follow the nuisance ordinance. The two permits that were recently issued didn't have that. There's nothing in the permits that speaks to ledge at all, which implies to me that it wasn't considered. I find it hard to believe after everything that happened over the last couple of years that that was missed. Now they were signed off by Marty. I work with Marty on the DRB. I like Marty. Marty's a good guy. I don't think anything malicious happened, but I do wonder whether he was aware of the problem. My ask is as we're issuing more of these permits, there are six more of these lots that can be developed. Can we minimize ledge? Don't allow in-ground swimming pools. Don't allow basements. Crossface and slab are perfectly valid building methods. If they need to trench for utilities or something, maybe that's something we can't get around. But there are ways to build, to build very nice, very expensive houses that don't require full basements. So if we could look at this ahead of time, then the developers would know and we can come to some sort of agreement. And maybe there is a way to do this, allowing the development and not torturing the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Oh, Janet Bellevents. Maybe she doesn't want to speak. Okay.
Can I just respond to what John said? I think, I think he raised a good point. But I think that we already have a law and no building permit can be written that allows violation of the law. How, how does the DRB get the authority to allow somebody to just flagrantly violate the law? They don't have that authority. So the law is there and everyone must follow it. Otherwise, who will respect the law? How do we have the rule of law? If, well, you, you don't have to follow it, but you do. If you're a poor person, oh yeah, we really nail you with the law. What if you're a corporation? No, you don't have to follow. No, this isn't how it's supposed to work. And it certainly shouldn't work that way at the local level. So I think we've got a rule here. We must enforce it and it doesn't matter. When you go and get a permit, you get that permit, not just with regard to the terms written in the permit, but also with respect to all the laws that exist. So you have to follow the rules of the permit plus the rules of the law. And if the city council really needs to learn basic things, if, if there's even any question about that. So the rulers exist. We should be definitely having the police come in and, and do what item seven enforcement of this noise ordinance says to provide the complaint to the person who's responsible, the perpetrator, and play out the enforcement mechanism. And that should be the very first thing we do at eight o'clock tomorrow morning. And I demand that the city, and I think we should all demand action by the city under law. And not just make complaints to the city. When we speak, we should always be asking for something. We should be demanding action. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that according to Vermont statutes, we are a legislative body. I just really want that to be very clear. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Yes?
Don Anglin, Golf Course Road. This is 2023 and we are not some 19th century political machine. So we need the government of South Burlington to work. We can't have the city council point their fingers at the DRB, the DRB point their fingers at the planning commission and then have the planning commission point their fingers back at the city council. You need to do your jobs and somebody needs to make a decision and make this right. Thank you.
Okay.
I was just going to offer, if you would like our future communications, put your email address on this piece of paper. If you are online and have not already provided an email address to myself or Paul Connor, please just either email me directly and ask for those future correspondence or put your email in the chat if you feel comfortable with that and I will record it from the chat space.
Okay.
Sure. What about all the voicemails that some people who never got this kind of phone calls? I'm just wondering, is there any documentation of that? Because I know several people who left voicemails about this issue, never got a call back. Left voicemails for Jesse Baker, Paul Connor, Marty, never got a call back. Several people. Just wondering, is there any, is there any accounting of those voicemails? So we do have an electric, yes, although all of our voicemails are recorded as sound files and we, that is all part of the public record we have received. And those folks should have gotten on the distribution list for public, for the public notice that we've been putting out. So we will double check that and make sure it is. But yes, those are all recorded as part of the public record in addition.
I understand that you can delete those after you get them. Maybe you're required to keep them.
Well, we're, no, as a municipality, all of our correspondence is a public record and we are required to keep it. So staff do not delete those.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming here, sharing both the noise to help us. Last time I heard it this year, I did not for whatever reason. And I think that certainly made it very clear how disruptive it really is to all of you. And for that, I'm, I'm, I'm really sorry and we hope that we can figure out a solution so this won't be a never-ending cycle until all those houses or future houses for that matter. So thank you. Yes, Christina?
Request.
Yes.
I know that you're busy in your lives outside of the work that you do for the city, but if you haven't been by to Golf Course Road or Golf Course Road and Fairway Drive, Nate, that you please just in the course of your day, coming back from Hanford or something, just take a drive by while this, while this rock drilling is going on and actually stand on the sidewalk and listen to it just to experience like the, like how excessive it is because it's really unbearable. Especially for the, you know, like I said, I'm point two miles away, but for the people who are directly adjacent to it, it is unbearable.
I have visited it four times and I have viewed.
Thank you so much for, for doing that.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll move on then to item five, council's announcements and reports on committee assignments and the city manager's report. Want to start, Andrew?
I've also been by and, well, as we know, I'm very sympathetic to what I heard tonight. And I hope we'll have more answers again in executive session. In terms of the couple of weeks, I attended the inaugural meeting of the school's climate action task force. It's a really good group. We're going to be focusing on three main areas. Curriculum, transportation, getting our kids to school in a more climate friendly way and facilities. How can we make the facilities? and facilities. How can we make the facilities more climate-friendly? Folks may know this is important. The new federal law, the IRA, was actually allowed our schools to build solar at 50 cents on the dollar. It's a 30 cent base credit, 10% credit for domestic content. And 10% because our schools except for Orchard have to be located in what the federal government considers to be a low-income census tract. You get an extra 10% bonus for that. So at 50 cents on the dollar, the electricity from that array would be much cheaper than from G P. Would help the schools budgeting. It also gets renewable energy. The schools can actually get this money back as a check from the federal government. It's also a new thing in IRA called direct pay. So we're going to be working on that. And I have a meeting tomorrow with Tim Jarvis and an attorney who is prompt here to do this pro bono for the schools, to work through this for us. So I'm very hopeful. Yeah. I also attended the Renewable Energy Vermont Conference. Lots of interesting discussions with our reps about our renewable edge ordinance and possibly getting that enacted statewide. Good discussion with the director of the PUC, TJ Poor, about our 500 kilowatt cap and could we get that changed. Lots of other good discussions, really, really good conference. And I think a lot of good connections were made.
Great. You've been busy. Tim?
I haven't been busy at all, but I have six things to announce. So I also went to the R A V conference. I went to the second day. I was disappointed there were no geothermal vendors this year. It seemed like there wasn't a lot of discussion on that, which I really would like to see this building has four wells perform geothermal energy for us. So I did attend two panels. One talked about new technologies, software that has been developed to help balance demand and load and battery storage across parts of Isla Nueva. And also part of a panel, we talked about regulatory issues and conflicts between, I think it's Act 250 and one of the Public Safety Commission regulations. That was fascinating. I also went to the Pension Advisory Committee. The quarter was down, but for year-to-date, we're still up. There's one element of fixed income in the core properties, which is not performing well because commercial properties are not doing very well. We had increased our exposure to that to 5%, I think, a couple of years ago. But then, you know, those commercial properties have seen a drop off, especially with the problem of back to work. So there are major cities where vacancies are running in excess of 25% where previously before, and then these, you know, these office buildings were full. So we're looking at that a little closer. I attended the Environmental Justice Community Forum Series on biodiesels for Vermont Clean Cities in partnership with the Greater Washington Region Clean Cities Coalition. It was right here in this room. And since then, I've been doing some reading on biodiesel, renewable diesel, and how those two fuels can help us, you know, migrate off of dirty petro diesel because they have cleaner emissions. It also has less of a greenhouse gas effect. The only problem is that, you know, the current engines in these, in diesel engines in large machinery and in trucks, they can't take 100% biodiesel at this point. Renewable diesel is a, is a drop-in fuel, but you have to mix petro with bio because of problems with low temperatures and others, other issues with the way that the biodiesel affects the feed lines. So I learned a lot just in the last week of doing a deep dive on that on the internet. But I think it, it really is essential, because we're not going to be able to turn over all of the heavy machinery engines over to electric in a snap like that in our attempt to like, you know, electrify everything. So this could put us, ease that transition. I also went to the tech jam at the Hula and interviewed a lot of different sites. I spoke extensively with Burlington Telecom and asked about what they were thinking about working with communities and developments that had underground conduits. And they said it's more difficult. They like, because being on the CCCUD, which is the Communications Union District, as the South Plamen rep, it became evident that, you know, they, they, it's harder for them to, to not work in those areas that don't have poles. So I also went to the ZEM, which you were at too. The ZEM opening for the school district right here in the back of us. Some really beautiful classrooms, nicely outfitted. The buildings are nice. I did check. I believe the windows are triple glazed, which is two giant heat pumps outside of them. Teachers all seemed happy. It was the opening day, and there was a lot of very nice airflow going on. So it seemed like they're well-ventilated. So I was pleased, and it was, it was great to be there. And lastly, if you haven't noticed, there's an art show downstairs that is comprised of past and present teachers from the school district. And excuse me for a little bit of nepotism, but my son might have to display on the counter. Don't miss it. So that's all I can remember that I did in the last two weeks.
Well, you didn't choose the artworks that are down.
No, I did, but I tended to the opening. Tended to the opening. Thank you for the delicious appetizers, by the way. Always helps.
Okay, Megan?
Yeah. So, welcome back, Helen. We've had a busy two weeks. I, I've been trying to fill your shoes and communicating with parents about school zones. I, in response to concerns about Shelburne Road with my husband, we went on a field trip down there just to see how the lights worked on Baldwood Avenue as well as down by Fayette Drive and McIntosh. And I just wanted to, to provide to the school board members and the superintendent my feedback based on, on concerns that have been expressed, that the lights are working well, that there is enough time to cross those streets. Obviously, those, that is a major street. It is a state highway. It is, I would say, more of concern the curb cuts when we're thinking about young people walking on Shelburne Road. So I just provided that feedback to them, as well as just to convey to you all that we currently have two school zones in our city. One is on White Street in front of Chamberlain School. The other is on Market Street, right in front of Rick Marquardt Central School. The third one is being considered. There's a traffic study that is ongoing on Dorset Street. So that would be in front of the middle and the high schools. So that leaves Orchard, and the state highway adds a little extra crinkle. And so I've been in communication with residents as well as with the superintendent and school board about those things. What I have to say, just as someone who sometimes drives, I do use the bus to get to work, and I try to walk and bike when I can. But when I do drive, and I am very aware that the amount of traffic over the 20 years that I've lived here has increased. People on, again, major roads, and I, I could point out Williston Road, because that's the one that I do tend to try to get out on, but also on Heinsberg Road, that when there is a backup, people block the intersection. And the rules of the road, okay, require that you allow people to turn out of that intersection. You cannot block intersections. So I might actually write something about this for the other paper around Front Porch Forum, because it is not just once. It's happened a lot. And I think that for everyone's, just the smooth use of our roads, really being reminded of that key, key thing. I'm not trying to jump in line. I'm just trying to get out and actually go the other way. So, but back to my council liaison ship. I wanted to report to the council that the Affordable Housing Committee is going to be coming forward. They would like to have a place on our agenda, have the first meeting in November, where we would use some funds to increase the housing trust fund. Right now, we have $50,000 annually in our budget to, to give to affordable housing projects. The committee is recommending $150,000. That would be adjusted for inflation. So that is something that I would like us to consider as well. Seed money for a land bank so that Green Mountain Habitat for Humanity could take land that the city has, has helped them purchase, build on it, sell it, and then use those funds to buy another parcel of land. And it would create kind of a circular self, you know, perpetuating cycle where more homeownership and affordable housing units could be developed in the city. So that is something that will also come before the city council. And the third point that they would like us to consider, there are impact fees for various things, police, recreation, et cetera, and they would like us to consider waiving those for affordable housing. So just wanted to give everybody the heads up on that. And I think, I think that was it. I am working with councillor Chalnick, but he has taken the lead on looking at the noise ordinance. But I just wanted the public to know that two councillors are looking into it. So. Is that said?
Okay, good. And I, as Megan acknowledged, I'd been away. I was on a trip. And I think she filled my shoes better than I fill them. So I appreciate all the work that, and the effort and the responses that you gave out. It, it apparently was a very, very busy two weeks. That said, the, I did manage to do a few things right before I left. And one was I got the chance to tour the three elementary schools and got to walk in and look at the ZEMS at Marquardt. They weren't, it wasn't the grand opening, so it was just the workers doing the finishing touches. But I have to say, I was really impressed with how sturdy they were. When people were calling them trailers, I had a very different image in my mind. And these are really substantial, and they look like they'll be beautiful classrooms. So I feel like that was a, a good decision in the short term to meet some of the enrollment issues. And it does not, did not appear to me that it was at all negative to be stuck in the ZEM. In fact, it looks like it's one of the nicer rooms in, in the schools. So that was interesting to see the, the three schools. And I would just note that the one school that's not getting ZEMS, just, it, it was clear that in the other two schools where they were waiting to move in, and it was all this kind of moving around temporarily until they were done, certainly had an impact on what you felt walking through those schools. Excuse me. And Orchard was what I always imagined or knew to be true of all the schools, the elementary schools in South Burlington. They're great, and everything is, I don't know, exciting looking, and the hallways and the classrooms. And it was clear that waiting for the ZEMS had a, took a little bit of a toll on those schools. But once they move in, I think they'll be back to really supplying an excellent education. So. Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, city manager. Your report.
Just a few quick updates. So yes, thank you councillor Emery for standing in for the last two weeks. I think you both equally do exceptional jobs, but really appreciated all the work you put in the last two weeks. I think you gave a great summary of our incremental work in partnership with the schools to ensure all of our kiddos are safe. There is, if folks want all the details and writing that councillor Emery just talked through, if you go to the press releases section of our city news page, about halfway down on our homepage, and click there, that letter is there in totality. So folks can read the progress we've made to date and what we're hoping to do into the future as well. I mentioned this at our last meeting, but just to say it one more time, because we're really excited about it. Adam Math started today as our new director of Parks and Recreation. We're really excited to have him on the team. He will be here along with our new IT director at your next meeting to meet you. Other than that, we are very focused on budget development. The department heads have been working really hard to submit their FY25 budget submittals. We got them at the end of last week, so now we are going through the citywide perspective on the budget as submitted, and we'll be working with leadership team over the next couple of weeks to finalize that, to bring to you in early December. Part of that, of course, is the Climate Action Plan implementation plans. You saw the Transportation Implementation Plan. Your next meeting, you will also see the government operations portion of that implementation plan. Also, at your next meeting, you'll receive the next update about the rental registry and options for you to move forward. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you. Item six, the consent agenda. There's only one item. That's the disbursement. I'll move that we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? And I, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda, signify by saying aye. And it passes. So we move to item seven, which is really the reason for this special meeting, to appoint a city councillor to fill the vacancy through town meeting day 2024.
So just a tiny bit of table setting here, especially for those participating in our meeting today or watching from home. At the last council meeting, council outlined a process to appoint, to fill Tyler Barnes's vacancy. He and his family are moving out of state for a professional opportunity. So we issued a press release about that. We posted it in a number of places, including an online ad in the other paper. We are extremely honored to get 10 folks expressing interest in serving. The names of those 10 are in your council packets and online for the public. Tonight, you can have whatever discussion you would like about those candidates. Councillor Emery and councillor Chalnick did spend a lot of time interviewing. Thank you for that time. You can have that conversation in an executive session if you so choose. And of course, any vote will need to be done in public. And just a reminder to the community, our charter indicates that the council has the ability to appoint an interim or a city councillor for a period until the next regular meeting. So at town meeting day, this position will go on the ballot to fulfill a one-year term, the completion of that one-year term. Happy to answer any other questions or.
Okay. It might be helpful to, to sort of articulate the process we use in terms of, I mean, I think Jessie did in part with the advertisement. And it may seem a little rushed, but it was my hope that, and it seemed like the council's agreement, that it would be really important to have someone fill that vacancy sooner rather than later, especially in light of all the work that we have before us, that really having five seats filled would be helpful. So we developed a small subcommittee, Megan and Andrew, to interview those candidates. And we're going to, as a council, remaining, remainder of the council, I believe in an executive session, will discuss their findings or their reactions and have a discussion and determine or decide who we think would be the best appointment, and then come back to an open meeting and share that with you and the reasons. We have received quite a number of people writing in or calling on occasion to advocate for a particular candidate, and we appreciate that. And I believe they've all been read through by all of us. So all of that effort by the public has been received, and I think will be helpful and part of our conversation. I think it's important to think about, we're looking for the, someone with, I think we agreed that it would be nice to have a little more geographical distribution. It would be good to have diversity of all sorts of factors. And I think importantly, we also wanted someone who would be quite familiar with city, this city's government and the issues that's at hand. It's basically a four-month appointment, and there's a lot to do between now and then. So we really are looking for and hoping for people. And I think that, that's what happened, that people who applied will have, have. The people who applied will have have brought with them, I think, significant city experience. And that's really helpful. That's something that we're looking for, not just sort of someone out of the blue saying, oh, that might be fine. So that is our process for tonight and going forward. So.
Will you take a motion?
I will. Well, if there are people in the audience who would like to speak, we can hear that now. That would be helpful. So Monica, you would like to.
Madam Speaker, I rise in favor of Paul Engels. He ran for the office. He received 1,300 votes from city residents. I have been here, I'm 82 years old. I've been in this city 52 years. I've seen this man work his butt off year after year after year on every committee here in South Burlington, Form-based code, design review board, everything. And in the four months that you have, you need somebody who, as you say, who's ready to go up and running right now. It's not time for on-the-job learning. And we live on the Shelburne Road side, so we'd like to see our side represented too. Other than that, I guess I just would say he was the only other that there were three candidates in the race. And I don't know where these other 10 people came from. And it's nice that they're interested and it's great. You have hard choices, but we just definitely want to see Paul take that seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, thoughts, anyone at home? All right. Well, thank you. So Tim.
I would like to move that the city council enter into executive session under 1 VSA 313 A3 for the purpose of discussing the appointment of a public officer. We would be inviting Jesse Baker, Stephen Locke and Colin McNeil to this session with Kyle Castle for the discussion.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Let me call back into order. This special meeting of the South Burlington City Council is Monday, October 30th, 2023. And we have just come back from an executive session where we discussed who we wish to appoint as the next city councillor to fill our vacancy that left by Tyler Barnes' resignation. And after a lot of discussion and back and forth, we determined that Larry Cufferman would be the best decision or the best selection for the next four months. And I'm going to ask Tim to share his summary because it was really, I think, quite good and really reflective of of what we were thinking.
So just a little bit of background, I've served since 2016. Unfortunately, we lost Pat Nowak in 2017. And at that point, we appointed Dave Kaufman. So we were tonight looking for somebody that we that we respected, who has served in the city for a given amount of time, who's shown fairness and good judgment in in the committees that they've served on. And I just want to remind everybody that it's a four-month appointment. And our intent here is to is to have somebody fill those four months because Tyler left and to do it in a fair way and pick somebody like Larry. And I think Larry's a great choice for this job. So that's how we write that.
Okay, so Larry hopefully will join us. Is Larry on?
Still there.
Oh, yeah. So congratulations, Larry. We look forward to serving with you for four months.
Congratulations, Larry.
Thank you, I'm just trying to come aboard. Thanks very much. Looking forward to it a lot. And we'll actually be back in town tomorrow. We're away right now, but.
Well, okay, well.
Larry, stop into city hall at some point tomorrow and get sworn in. You might be sworn in by somebody in costume.
Okay. Be later in the afternoon, great, will do.
Does Larry know how often the city council meets?
I think I think quite often right now. I think you've got a you've got a you've got a good workload ahead of you. So I'll get up to speed, but when we're back tomorrow, I'll check in with Jesse.
Okay, we hope you can join us with a joint meeting, a steering committee meeting on Thursday.
Thursday, right, I see that. I'll 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 definitely check that out.
Thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to all the candidates for their willingness to serve.
Thanks to Meghan.
It was a hard decision, I have to say. We had a lot of really excellent candidates with pluses and minuses amongst all of them. So that's who we selected. So thank you for your your interest. Okay, moving on then to item eight.
This item may go a while, can we take a two-minute break?
Okay, we can take a two-minute break. Call back to order and to get the the pleasure of Paul Connor and a discussion of this city plan for 2024. You can sit wherever you would like because there's no mic. The whole room is mic.
Take this because it's got.
The hot mic in place, yeah. But it's probably easier on the table together, so that's fine, that's great.
So I can just say a few table-setting things for this conversation. So just as a reminder to those participating online and in the room, that this is really meant to be a work session of the council. There is a public hearing warned for November 16th, which is very intentionally warned solely for the purpose of hearing public input. So we'd encourage the council to really keep as much as possible. This is your opportunity to talk amongst yourselves. To that end, I would recommend that you not take any votes tonight. You certainly can have conversation and and get a sense of where each other is. But because you are still very actively in the listening process of the community, hearing their feedback before you take any official votes is a good idea. Kelsey and Paul are both here tonight, both to hear your conversation and understand what your perspective is for future changes that may be written. They are also here tonight as your professional planning experts. So if there is a question about implications of policy decisions, they certainly can provide guidance on that. No one from the planning commission is here tonight to specifically speak on behalf of the planning commission. If there are areas where you would like to know more about why the planning commission made some choices they made, that's certainly something they could take up at their next meeting and bring feedback back to you. But we do have a member.
There's three, there's three, Lori and Fran.
Are they on, oh, they, I see, I didn't see Lori, okay. And Fran, there's three, good.
The commission did not assign a person to speak on their behalf.
Okay, with that, I'm going to shut up and let you.
Okay, so thoughts, do you want?
Can I just start off?
Yeah, sure.
Can I suggest we flip pages maybe, just like start, you know, just kind of do this in order of the.
That way it makes sense.
Yeah, starting at the top? Yeah, so I don't have that many items, just so you know.
Okay.
Just the first item, and you're going to hate me for this, but I I really don't, I don't like the orange at the top.
The color orange.
No, I don't like the whole paragraph. It's redundant because it's pre-redundant because it it, you say existential, you know, threat, like throughout the whole document, we don't need this preamble, in my estimation. And that's my honest opinion. I think it's, like I've said before, it's a little bit alarmist. You've already stated several times the document what we need to do, why we're doing it. And I think it just, it becomes unnecessary. And I think it's a little too emotional and it it's just, we don't need it.
I agree. I think I agree. It's also restated in the second paragraph.
Yeah.
In the second sentence says the same thing as the first.
The first paragraph does, I don't think, it said otherwise in this document, correct from wrong, is the last sentence, "Action on climate change is the most important goal in this plan." That's a real policy decision that is important if we think it's correct. And we should state that if we think it's the right policy.
It's the last sentence in that.
Last sentence, I think.
But it's in the fourth paragraph. "The overriding guiding principle of this plan is to make every policy decision through the lens of climate resilience and reduction."
Oh, so where, where is that?
In the fourth black paragraph.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that says it.
I do too.
Quite as.
I'm okay with that, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, so I I would agree by eliminating the orange, although I would call that red. You're colored one, right?
Am I getting older? Is that what's happening?
I thought you had said once you.
I just can't hear, I can't hear. Thank you.
All right, on the first page, yeah, okay.
There's more?
For me on the first page. I wrote a whole councillor corner about it. So the third guiding principle, and as I explained in an email, when Jessica and Paul came before the city council with their slides and their PowerPoint presentation, I did not realize that the human focus was going to be taken out of there. And I find that the, what we find on the next page, where it talks about people-oriented environment, is not stated enough. When we had our initial meeting in September of 2022, both Paul and Jessica had voiced the goal that it wouldn't be the built infrastructure that would be taking precedence, but rather the, and I wrote it in my own words here, but rather a focus on on the people. And that the plan would be focused on problem-solving concerning the people's needs responsive to their lived experiences. And I think that's really important. I'm having spoken with a planning commissioner who had understood human focus to mean that, you know, just the the human desire to build and to develop and to to enrich themselves was going to be the goal of the plan. I found that to be really regrettable because I think that if we if we lose the people-oriented plan, we're losing why we're building a plan, to be honest. We could sit in an engineer's office and and we could develop a really beautiful plan. But if we don't get engaged with people on the ground and to know their experiences, to know how they want to have their neighborhoods, you know, look and feel when we're when we're putting pocket park, pocket parks or dog parks or bike lanes or new sidewalks or whatever it is, we've lost. And so I really, really would like to have either people, people-oriented. It's it's an actual word that was acceptable to the plan commission on page five. Perhaps people in oriented environment, because that's the that's the term that's used on page five, just the next page. And what I liked about the original definition in the people, the human focus, was a focus on belonging, a focus on diversity, a focus on on place. And I think that that is lost.
So you're suggesting that substituting.
Thoughtful and sustainable built environment.
With.
People-oriented environment.
What's the rest of you think?
So I think the, what you said, Meghan, about focusing on place and the aspects of community are really important. When I hear the words human-focused, it sounds to my ears, I know other ears that I've spoken to, people that's like a little arrogant and selfish, placing, you know, us above very dominion over everything else. So I I li- I understand what you're saying. And I think the concepts that you're articulating are really important. The words human-focus or people-focus just feel to be like a little cringy.
That's what we're dealing with, with the pounding that's going on, right? That's what we deal with when we talk about noise.
And all those values are really important. I just think maybe it's just the words, though.
I think, so you you prefer thoughtful and sustainable built.
Yeah, I've added some of the other concepts that that you're articulating as are are important.
But it doesn't.
Diversity.
Discuss a built environment. It discusses the human experience of that environment. And that's the value that I think is being lost in this substitution of built environment for people-oriented environment. And by people-oriented environment, people enjoy trees. People enjoy open meadows. People enjoy walking trails, you know, in in our open spaces. So it it's it's, I think that it is very much, you know, I'm a humanist and I'm going to go back to things that I I said to this planning commissioner. But if you take human beings out of the equation, you'll get engineering plans that don't take into account human beings. And that's where it gets scary.
Need to express all those values, for sure. It needs just, it's a word thing.
Are are the words of people-oriented built environment?
People-oriented environment.
People-oriented environment?
It's the third line on the next page.
Well, the other living creatures.
Well, we've we've got all the other living creatures. We've we've got the, we've got them there. We've got them there. And I think that we have to realize that we are building a plan for where to build, how to build, where not to build. And and all of that is going to be made by decisions are going to be made by people. And we want to include diversity in our decision-making. And so we need to reach out to people. We need to.
Well, so we should certainly, as I said, my perspective would be we should include those words, diversity and other words. In fact, I just personally.
But diversity means nothing if we don't talk about people.
To me, again, it's just words. I personally don't like the words human-focus or people-oriented. It sounds arrogant, good, that's just me.
I find it more human and humane, and I think it's important. I I really, I find this this language to be an engineer's text as opposed to someone who is going to be living in a neighborhood and going to be, you know, weighing in on various major decisions that this plan is announcing. And I'm not saying that, you know, people should have veto power over, you know, the 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 needs for us to to mitigate for climate resiliency. But people need to be taken into account. And if we are going to be developing, you know, where the solar fields go, where the the sidewalks and multi-use paths go, we need to hear from people and we need to have taken into account. So I I attended an online seminar on inclusive transportation and it was people-focused. It was because some people need more lighting than others. People of color need more lighting than others, for instance.
Well, so we're never going to get through this if we spend this much time on every single page.
I have another quote on this page, separate, in a separate place.
Pardon me?
I have a comment on this page, put it somewhere else.
Okay.
And I said the amount of.
So, well, I'm just trying to reach, is there a consensus that, I know you have trouble with people-oriented?
Well, how did you want to phrase, is it just the the bold, thoughtful, and sustainable whole environment? You want to change that phrase or you want?
Yeah, I do. And then I'd like to re-add the words diversity, sense of place, sense of belonging. Those were things that were in the original wording.
Okay, so somewhere, yeah, because I was going to say, if we change the bullet, to people-oriented environment, and then we don't, we have so much language around a built environment, it doesn't flow. So I think you probably need a little more. Yeah, word smithing in the the text of that. And in June, just of this year, they did have wording. They did, that was replaced. Paul, Connor, I mean, I'm sorry, Engels?
We had a discussion about this at the end of the planning commission last week and about Meghan's councillor's corner and about the discussion that you had with Lori. And we, we were all of accord that the language that we used is the language that we wanted to use. We spent months on this.
Yeah.
Wrangling about it a bit, we spent hours, you know. So and we agreed that, you know, this is the language we decided on back in June. It's been vetted, you know, in public meetings all through the summer. And we thought that this was more precise language than just saying human-focused or, you know, people-focused or whatever. We felt we were being more precise within that. And I think maybe as Kelsey even pointed out, of course, the entire plan. And I think maybe as Kelsey even pointed out, of course, the entire plan is human focused. I mean, that's that's what we're doing here. We're writing a plan.
Okay. Well, what if we added people oriented thoughtful and sustainable built environment? Put it all in.
Yeah. I I simply want people as a guiding principle. I want, yeah, I'm happy with that.
Can we think about that? And then some other language around diversity and sense of place and belonging.
Some diversity in with justice.
No.
We're here to honor Commissioner Robert Herrandine. See, he's been on the the commission now for sixteen plus years.
Just a reminder, you don't need to finalize lines. I don't think you're batting around some ideas today.
So that's an idea that seems to have.
So two things on this page. First page, same page. We use the term housing crisis. And then on page sixteen, we use a term unprecedented housing shortage. I would like to use the terminology chronic housing shortage. I know people sometimes refer to this as a crisis. It's a market imbalance. When I bought my house in fifteen, there was an oversupply of houses. Things change in the market. I have a feeling with mortgage rates going so high, we will see a change, maybe pretty soon. I think chronic housing shortage is is a more appropriate, more appropriate terminology than crisis.
Or just housing shortage.
Housing shortage is fine, too.
Yeah.
I also deleted the words and nationally.
So where exactly?
So, Helen, do you see my markup? I should have printed out everyone. It says in the second paragraph.
Oh, on the on the very top, under your document. Okay, I was looking at guiding principles.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
On then, this plan says we're facing a housing crisis nationally. There's a lot of debate about what's happening nationally. I think there's a lot of good research, you know, on both sides. I I attached this little article not to talk about housing generally, just because of the stats that are in here about the national housing situation. I don't think we need to talk in this plan about what's happening nationally. And given the date, I don't think we should.
I disagree. This is a major priority of the affordable housing committee that made an appeal for the crisis to be put back into the plan. We have three crises listed in that second paragraph, housing crisis. And it is in addition to the climate crisis, but also we are facing a crisis of community stemming from physical and mental health challenges, disconnectedness and loneliness and increasing income disparities. I think all of these things go together. And I I really think we are in in a state of crisis. We have homeless. You've been reading the emails we've been receiving over the past two weeks. People are feeling unsafe. People are feeling that they need to have a response from our government. And I think providing housing is a response to a crisis that people have communicated to us. And I I realize that that the land trust in South Burlington has given direction for both human focused and and housing crisis. And I respectfully thank them for their input. But I think it's important for them to realize that people who work in other areas of crisis have equally important needs that they are advocating, and housing is one of them.
Megan, I don't know if you're implying something about the land trust. I have not communicated at all with.
They've been writing to us because after the land trust.
I've not seen those and I've not any communication.
In June, last year, the human focus was removed. So it it, as was the housing.
This is a conversation among us.
Yeah, well, it's public conversation. Yeah.
Well, what's the sense? I I mean, I I'm okay with having three different crises identified. I I think it's hard to 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 say there's.
We're here to honor Commissioner.
Only a climate crisis, and then the housing is a critical shortage.
Or that's the case. That is the case.
But it is a crisis. And we have.
It is a homelessness crisis. It's not a housing crisis.
No, they're they're called unhoused, actually. They prefer, and and it is a crisis.
Well, but then the other crisis, if you will, is the physical now health challenges.
Yeah.
I think that is a crisis.
And that's that's raised a second time in here as well.
Good to have three crises.
Crisis.
Crisis.
Yeah. I mean, it does create a kind of negative introduction, but or a panic introduction in a way.
Well, it just acknowledges what we know.
Right.
Well, that's why.
Well, but it sets a tone. I mean, you didn't like the first red bold, which was too much of a like, my god, everything is.
But that's why I would add that this plan is focused on problem solving. And we are focused on responding to needs and and being sensitive to lived experiences. I think that's that's a positive. And I agree that it is negative. That was actually raised in the counselor applicant's interviews. And I I think that we need to, just like under the, something about, let me get there, under the population and people, there's actually a section on people. No statistical or demographic, this is on page fourteen, or demographic analysis can sum up the diversity and variation amongst our community members. In order to meet the challenges we face, South Burlington needs to be a place where neighbors know each other and will help each other in crisis. And I think that we need to say at the very outset that the government is also going to be responsive to people who are experiencing crisis. So we are focused on problem solving. We are focused on responding to people's needs and to people's lived experiences because we are going to be going through in the next six years, right? We're twenty twenty three, almost twenty twenty four. By twenty thirty already, it's going to be severe changes. And this council, whoever's on it, is going to be needing to answer to people.
Other comments? How about page four? Anybody got any on that?
We just did, right?
I thought you just said page three.
You you have.
I have an older version, but it's the only.
Oh, you don't have the city plan online? Okay.
It's pretty close. I can help.
Okay, well, I guess I can go online. I just work with paper better. Sorry.
I can help.
Oh, well, I can bring that. I'm sorry. I'll I'll do. Yeah, under notable changes, I would also include.
What page, Megan?
So this is page eight. So we're talking about the notable changes in the city. I would also, so the plan increases the city's emphasis on the climate crisis and takes a stronger stance on how we need to both mitigate climate change itself and counter the effects of a changing climate. The plan also places greater emphasis on inclusivity and equity throughout, including through governance structures, through how we undertake daily decision making. And this plan speaks more directly about building community by increasing connection opportunities and building a South Burlington identity. These themes were built up repeatedly through the community outreach. And and that is also really, really important. I I almost find that to be a paragraph that could go at the top. I find that to not be a notable change, but kind of like, you know, the State of the Union kind of thing. So I just, if we're looking for a way to to bring people and and problem solving into that first page, that paragraph is is really a nice paragraph. And I don't think it's a notable change. I think it's more of a state of the city, so to speak.
So I'm sorry, where is that? What page?
Second paragraph.
What page?
So it's the.
Our page eight.
I'm on the, I'm on yours, page.
Introduction, page eight, notable changes, second paragraph.
So you're you're thinking that ought to go somewhere else?
At the very beginning.
The whole paragraph?
Yeah, I think it's a nice introduction. I think it's a nice introductory paragraph. It just, yes, we're dealing with these crises, but this is what we want this plan to do. And I think that's an important statement.
Do you want to just take it from the plan also? This plan also places greater emphasis on inclusion. You started at that part. And and because we've already talked about climate change, and the the first sentence is already taken care of in the previous sentences, so.
Yeah, sure. I mean.
Just take from.
There would probably need to be some kind of transition, right? Because the also is referring.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Well, you take the also out, just put in places, greater emphasis.
I'll just add it under where we're talking about the climate crisis and mitigation climate change. And countering the effects of a changing climate, I think the mitigating has to do with people. And so people.
So this you would put in the introduction?
It's not a notable change. I think that's what this plan is trying to do. And I like that it sums up these themes were brought up repeatedly through the community outreach. I think that's a really nice, you know, we've heard you. The people oriented.
Well, I I think if we go with that, that that fourth paragraph, talking about city plan, twenty twenty four is an expression of our values. It's a community, our goals for the future, blah, blah, blah. And the overriding principle is to make every policy's policy decision through the lens of climate change. I think this paragraph needs to get integrated more than just getting plopped on.
Right, right.
Otherwise, this is going to sound a little funny, I think. Yes, I'm just, that's my guidance to the step. I think you might want to rewrite that fourth paragraph in the introduction to include this or a lot of it. I think that would flow better. Other than the sort of cut and paste job. So any other? Can we move on to?
Yeah, might need to cover this page sixteen, whatever I think before.
Okay.
So sixteen, goal three.
Yeah, let me get to it.
My notes, too. I did something on page fourteen, but let me find it. We can go to sixteen first.
Okay, so we're on sixteen, housing.
I think goal three was intended, or should be limited to rental housing. The vacancy rate did never.
Increase the rental vacancy rate?
Yeah, has never been five for homeowners. I mean, right now it's point seven nationally. It's never. People talk about vacancy for rental. I just think that was an error in goal three.
Still a tough goal.
Very tough goal, very tough goal.
But the correct, like, a homeowner is not a real, is an impossible goal and never something.
Which paragraph, Andrew, I'm sorry?
Goal three, under housing goals.
Thanks, okay, yeah.
I mean, that's a real stretch goal.
Even for rentals, a stretch, as a rumor.
Yes, that's what I mean, yeah.
For homeowners, it's a possible.
We couldn't build enough.
We did a lot of stretch goals.
Right, well, yes, I mean, but that's what it is. It's a plan. It's it's a.
But now the stretch goal, goal eight, I don't see how the city has any more than extremely indirect influence. I mean, we could say here, you know, work toward world peace, right? But that's how goal eight reads to me, honestly. I mean, I agree with it. But it doesn't feel to me like a goal that this city has enough influence on to retain here.
Well, if you got the vacancy rate at five percent.
I certainly want to keep these things as goals. I said, I know that, again, the affordable housing committee has felt really, really.
They did. They did feel, they wrote a very detailed, long section, that's for sure. Yes, they did.
Right. But it's it's a goal, right? It doesn't mean that it's easy. Just like.
If we have, I guess my perspective is we don't have levers to influence this, like we do other.
So what are the actions that go along?
What are you doing?
This is about jobs and income and, you know, this is about a minimum wage and, you know, I mean, I just don't think.
Economic development is definitely something that.
Building five thousand units of rental housing by that time, so that there's so much competition at all, the rents come down, and then it's not fifty percent anymore.
But I also think it has to do with developing economic opportunity. I also see it as potentially, you know, something that the the affordable housing community would be, you know, involved with us in partnership. I'm not saying that we're going to choose a number that we're going to get to. I mean, we've, this is something that one of our applicants wanted. He wanted a report card to say how many of our past goals have we truly achieved? And it would probably be very few, right? So we have to give ourselves a direction, I think.
Can we just say reduce the percentage of households who spend more than fifty percent?
Yeah, just.
Rather than say by half.
Yeah, not even say reduce the percentage and then say by facilitating more housing.
So can I?
It could be economic development, too.
This is the housing committee. It's not a, I don't.
So I I just want to clarify a little bit. No, 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 I don't think you're gaining granular, but I I want to clarify a little bit how, what I perceive this goal to mean. So by reducing the percentage of households who spend spend more than fifty percent of their income on housing costs, that's talking about AMI, right? That's talking about the folks who are at a lower level of AMI and therefore are subsidized to not pay more than fifty, more than thirty percent of their income on housing. The levers you have to, that's, that could be economic opportunity and more housing and whatnot. The levers you really have to pull around that are about inclusionary zoning, about a housing trust fund around. As we grow, are we keeping up with with housing growth across the income spectrum, which is, I think, what what you have repeatedly voted to do anyway through the LDRs and through funding the housing trust fund? So I I do actually think that it's not just about like more rental on the market that might help. There are economists who think that, but it really is about that AMI and AMI level and how we are investing in subsidizing affordable housing development. You can take it out. I just want, it's, I want to put a few more words.
A typical target in the affordable housing community is to strive for households to not spend more than thirty percent of their income. So here it's talking about reducing those who are spending more than half of their income.
Right.
So that's really, as as Jesse said, you know, disproportionately, the lower income portion of our community who are spending half of all their money on households. So the solutions go towards that. I think we would broadly advocate that where you can have a numerical target in the plan, it gives us the community something to strive for, whether that's the right number is is up to you, but it would generally.
Oh, I would agree on that, yeah.
Say we did, you know, we made this progress towards it versus not having a number.
Well, by half is a lot, but we can have that number. Well, fortunately, it's not the majority of our of our residents, so.
Oh, for sure.
Right, we're not looking at twenty thousand people.
But, I mean, well, nine and ten are very, very ambitious. Will we get there? Most likely not because we don't have those kinds of resources to weatherize six hundred homes annually, right? So but let's keep the number there because let's, that's what we need to do, right?
And we have levers.
We don't have companies. We don't have workers.
So goal test says electrify. Can we clarify what that means just because, you know, or yay here? I mean, I know what you mean, but we should maybe just spell that a little bit more clearly.
Don't make fossil fuels from.
We'll just say that, you know, convert fifty homes to, yeah, to electric heat.
Conversion is a word that I've heard regularly, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good.
Perfectly comfortable with doing that. Just note that electrify is the word from the Climate Action Plan. But you shouldn't feel that you need to stick to it, but I'm just noting that becomes a slight change from the Climate Action Plan. It might be better wording.
Let's keep it, let's keep it according to the climate action.
Okay.
And keep it electrified? Why can't you improve something? I mean, this is sort of a different audience.
Electrify I E convert.
Well, yeah.
I mean, if you'd like to electrify, I wasn't trying to dissuade. I was just giving.
Yeah.
A notation, but if you'd like to have a little parenthetical, would happy to do that.
That's fine.
So we're not going to change it? Is that what you're saying? Okay, making it something on fourteen.
It's good, it's good, it's good.
It's good, okay, yeah. So what's next?
Eighteen? Did anyone, everyone get my markup?
Yes, it was in our packet.
Okay, so first is, I just have a question around in paragraph two, eighteen thousand jobs, really isn't.
Just not looking at your, not looking at the fact.
Healthy, because when I went on housing data.org, it seemed to indicate eleven thousand four hundred and seventy something. So I just wanted to check that number, eighteen thousand in the second paragraph. Okay, um, in the. Second full paragraph, the one that begins a housing shortfall, restricts economic growth. I thought that paragraph needed, you know, this plan is funny. It's like dueling sections, right? It don't speak to each other that well. And I thought that paragraph needed some tempering that spoke to the rest of the plan. That talks about the. Challenges of building more housing. So I drafted an insert. I can read it. If my fellow counselors don't have it online, okay. So I would add an insert after the words, this is another reason we need to think regionally about housing goals. The second paragraph. We must also be cognizant of impacts on natural areas. As we address the housing shortfall, the Climate Action Plan adopted by the city, and these are the words for the plan. Attempts to resolve potential tension by recommending dense development areas with easy access to walking biking services. And conservation by remaining natural resource areas. Rapid growth in residential housing may also strain city resources. Including the capacity of our school infrastructure, our roads and municipal services. As we plan for growth, we must be mindful of our carrying capacity.
That's a lot.
It is a lot, but I think. I think it's sort of tempered.
That's in the climate action.
Yeah, well, if it's in the climate action plan, why does it have to be in here?
I mean, it is sort of looking through the housing shortfall through the lens of climate change.
I just think that, well, again, I thought that these words needed to be tempered. This section is very, it doesn't connect well with the rest of this document. And we do say everything should look through a climate lens. And the insert that I drafted is intended to provide some of that.
Deflation. Well. This paragraph is talking about housing in general, both locally and regionally, right? And about commuting distances and and how if we don't have, like, several businesses have stated. If people want to live here, but they can't, but they want to work here, and so very quickly growing businesses, right?
Really, the first sentence, which says flat out, housing shortfall restricts growth. Hinders our ability to meet climate change mitigation goals. I think that sentence needs to be tempered.
I personally agree with one of our applicants who said, where is the open space plan? Why is there no link to the open space plan as an appendix or in the index? And I would think that. Instead of just saying paying attention to something, we have spent so many human hours, volunteer hours. And resources on developing plans. And so let us develop according to those plans, you know, as opposed to just this open being sensitive to. We have really focused and we have, we have developed maps, right, with corridors. And we have actual parcels in the city that have been identified. And so having that open space plan to determine, you know, where those different. Housing developments should go is is something that I know our planning and zoning staff are very familiar with. Because they put together those LDRs that we passed in February of twenty twenty-two. Where they determined, you know, where those neighborhood PUDs could go versus the conservation PUDs versus all these things. And and so I think that we have a plan. I don't think we need to leave it open to what is kind of a vague cognizant of impacts on natural areas. We have planned for that. We have LDRs that prepare for that. So just having some kind of link perhaps to our open space plan does make good sense. Just for people who want to know how we're making those decisions. And maybe that's something that should be, let me just see if it's included. I'm sorry, I didn't do this before. I have to get back to this one, because I'm now I'm looking at your comments, Andrew. Um, that was on page fourteen. No, 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 it was on page nine and ten. Implementation. And so maybe we should, I mean, we have the land development regulations. We have the official map. Should we put the open space plan on that list?
That's great. I don't think it addresses my concern about this sentence standing as it is. Without some qualification. The sentence which says a housing shortfall restricts growth and hinders our ability to meet our climate change mitigation goals.
Why? Because we say that these are areas where we can develop housing according to our plans. So how does it contradict our open space plan? We have developed our land development regulations in accordance with our open space plan. And therefore, we are.
That's not what this sentence is talking about. Anyways, I, you know. The sentence reads, a housing, doesn't refer to, the also pertains, it says, a housing shortfall restricts growth. Hinders our ability to meet our climate change mitigation goals. I, I think that sentence on its own is misleading. It should be tempered.
I like that sentence. I think that. It leads to why we're having infill. It leads to why we're doing more multi-unit. Leads to why we're building for students and and young residents without families. I think it leads to all of that. And I think that's an important statement that our business community has clearly indicated to us. We cannot hire because we cannot find housing for our new employees. That's super.
That it it leaves a gap for interpretation. That would displace all the work we've done on habitat blocks and forest blocks, open spaces. Is that what you're implying here? Because, I mean, there's other stuff in here that talks later about, you know, trying to.
In part, again, I think that these are kind of like, it's like, almost a Jekyll and Hyde plan in some sense, right? You've got.
It's all Jekyll and Hyde.
Several sentences that don't speak to each other. And, um, you know, listing the open space plan over here doesn't help. When people understand what this paragraph is addressing. And the insert I drafted, we can take it or not, is intending, my intent there was to try and make these things speak to each other a little more.
I think it's good.
I, I think it's fine because we're talking just about housing here at this point and.
No, no, that's the problem.
Well, I mean, that's. That is the exact wrong.
But there are going to be parts of our city would have been housing.
Like people can take page eighteen and use it to say X, and people will take page nineteen and say Y. The pages don't speak to each other that well, and that drives into lots of issues.
The maps and plans.
And the words are important too.
But this, this is section on housing.
I know.
And I, I really think it leads to discussions about infill. And the need for more multi-units and building up and not out. I think it's there. Because it says our ability to meet our climate change mitigation goals.
More housing in commercial areas.
Yeah, exactly. That's why we're putting, right, mixed use.
In there. Well, and that is what the plan says, those are the words that I wanted to bring in. So, yeah. Couple sentences.
They're in there.
Okay.
Next page is nineteen for me. Let me just make sure. Hello, we're here.
We'll see on the T V.
Coming away here. Just get there, sorry. All right. All right, so we are talking about.
Page nineteen?
Yeah, let me just make sure. It is page nineteen. It is. And it's under existing housing stocks. That starts on page eighteen. It's the second full paragraph on page nineteen.
Nineteen eighty?
South Burlington has.
Has significant aging housing stock. South Burlington experienced its first wave of residential development after World War Two with construction of primarily single-family homes. All right, so the homes from that era may have some challenges with insulation, energy efficiency, and building materials. And. If you want to say may lack insulation, I find challenges. We're very, very wary of urban renewal. I'll be, I'll put it right out there, okay? Very wary of houses being torn down and then being built up again, right? So I think that the challenges is a word that is too vague. It can be seen as something that needs, you know, to to be fixed in a way that is not.
So you wanted to say just may lack?
If you want to, or what I had suggested is. And it is. Not here. I thought it had been here. Okay. These homes should be reinvested in. The last sentence is what I had suggested. In place of that, challenges, these homes should be reinvested in, including options like weatherization and updates to the homes themselves. And investment in the neighborhood infrastructure, community gathering spaces, and aesthetics. And I think that. If you want to say may lack, at least that says something. Challenges, it leaves open to my mind.
May lack.
Yeah, may lack insulation.
I mean, that makes it.
Well, have, just say have deficiencies in insulation, energy efficiency, ability to.
That sounds better than challenges. Thank you. It's more specific.
Okay, deficiencies, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you, yes.
Okay, next.
Page twenty-one?
Um, I think page twenty for me. Um, how many pages is this thing? I really, I don't have that many.
What the last word.
We can't.
I really don't have that many. Okay, so on page, hold on, let me get there.
This is important.
It is. I'm just looking at the time and looking at the pages and the page twenty.
This is true. This is our only bite. It's an apple.
All right, so I am coming here with some feedback from members of our community who lives in, live in these post-war neighborhoods. And this plan specifically identifies post-war neighborhoods as those where infill are going to go in. And you are going to have mini riot.
Which part, where are we?
So this is at the top. This is at the top of page twenty. Twenty, all right, so lot sizes in the city's post-war neighborhoods are typically larger than similar neighborhoods regionally and nationally. Which presents opportunities for small-scale infill and investment in neighborhoods. And I would suggest.
I'm at fault where you are. You're on page twenty.
Very top, very top.
Continuing paragraph.
The sentence right above words says house loss.
Okay, older community, no, recently several former.
Last sentence, lots of.
Lot sizes, okay, yeah.
You see it? And it's the, so it is only these post-war neighborhoods that have been identified for small-scale infill. Or it's also called infill that is context-sensitive. And it is something that, again, that's on page seventeen and page seventy-seven, that context-sensitive. And I would encourage us to really look at where we want to put in more public transportation. If we are forward-looking for the next, you know, ten years or twenty years. We should look beyond those post-war neighborhoods. We should look.
What is a post-war neighborhood?
So it is Chamberlain, Mayfair Park, Orchards, right, Eastwoods.
Pretty much most of the town that's single-family home that was built after nineteen forty-five.
Right, yeah, right.
After nineteen fifty-three, either one, but most of them are.
Everywhere except the southeast corner.
Right.
Right.
Five houses, okay.
And there is interest for people that who want to take the bus.
What's your, what's your point? What's your problem with the sentence, though? This is saying that it would be great, yeah, I think I'm, you're implying that ADU infill on some of those large lot. Single-family homes would be an important way to to.
Near, near, near roads where present and future public transportation.
Well, we can't control where, so these homes are spread out, right? In some of these neighborhoods, and some are right on lines and some are not. The important thing is that if there's available land, and it's desirable to put an ADU there, let's make that possible.
But some people would like to see that land be used by the municipality to put in a community center or.
No, no, we're talking about individual people's lots.
I know.
Right, so if they have a half-acre lot or or a third of an acre lot, and their house is on a very small part of that. And they have the ability to put an ADU out back, let's, let's explore that.
Then why only in the post-war neighborhoods and not throughout?
They're talking about the ones that have the larger lots that it can accommodate.
Right, but there are, there are houses with large lots throughout the city, so why?
These are all clustered together in very tight neighborhoods, that's.
Right, but we need to maybe build other tight neighborhoods elsewhere in the city. That is the point.
Build others, build other tight neighborhoods.
Through infill.
Well, no, I mean, that, that's future development. We're talking about existing homes right now.
But people have, like. Let's just face, um, I can't think of his name now, but people have complained about this, that we're picking up.
Yes, yeah.
How do you want to change the sentence? How do you want to change the sentence? What do you want to say?
I'm wondering if I'm hearing in the conversation here, is is the concern around the term post-war neighborhoods? Because I think we were intending to describe typically single-family home neighborhoods, regardless of their location. So whether that's.
Built in the nineteen eighties.
Or it's Pheasant Way or it's Mayfair Park, I think.
Yeah, so why don't you just say single-family home lots instead of post-war? Because the post-war reminds me of the G I Bill, reminds me of, you know, those, those houses that were built for all of the soldiers that came home after the Second World War.
Certainly, we can read more, yeah.
Yes.
That's all.
Yes.
The only change.
Okay, thank you. All right.
That's funny.
Okay.
In many of the city's neighborhoods are typically larger.
Yes.
Because I think the, the reason that it was written that way was probably in acknowledgement that a neighborhood like Queen City Park is very, very compact. So the very, very first one's worked on that, and then afterwards, not so many of the city's neighborhoods. Would that be more?
Yes.
And then we'll, okay, okay.
I think people would like every neighborhood to be.
Um, next.
Candidate.
Page twenty-one, I would like to.
I don't need to cut you off, but we have a lot to go through.
To look.
I think I'm at the end, except for one more.
Reference to this.
Oh, good.
New housing.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Oh. This is report that we're citing here, the cost benefit report, new houses like that, I think is fatally flawed. It didn't take due account.
What page are we on, I'm sorry?
School education.
Twenty-one, the three bullet points under housing resources, the second bullet.
International resources.
The student report.
Something that was done by.
Yeah, uh, the school was not included. Um, and I think because that this report is fairly flawed, and I don't think we should cite it.
You don't think we should cite it?
Yeah, I think we should, yeah, should not.
We should cite it.
We should don't.
No, you're saying not because the, the data is flawed, so what's, how does it help?
It was done.
Oh, 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 oh.
Yeah, it's missed, it's a misleading report. It, it's a fairly short report that was done fairly quickly.
Uh-huh.
Um, I, you know, it, it had value, but I don't know how accurate this.
Yeah, I do agree. Yeah, I do.
So, that's good.
I think it was an obedient report that did not have the true test of sound. So do you not want it as a resource?
Just break it.
But I do like the strategic plan of the school. I like that being the addition.
I'm just talking about the second bullet.
Right, but I would replace it with the, the school district strategic plan. I think that makes sense.
If that's appropriate here in the housing, but okay, I don't know.
Because, I don't know.
The community services.
Schools.
There's a section for schools later on.
Yeah.
Under community services.
Yeah, okay, well, we can certainly revisit. So we're recommending striking that, that second bullet, yeah. But not replacing it with the school report, because that will be in the school section. Okay.
Twenty-two.
Next, twenty-two?
Yeah.
The economy.
The word integrated. Uh, it says.
Where?
These, the city will explore allowing integrated housing in some currently commercial areas. I can't.
Where are you?
Twenty-two.
Which paragraph?
If I wrote down the number on.
Looking for integrated. There is a control F.
Is it in the second? Is it in the second paragraph?
Oh, it's on page twenty-four. I think it's on page twenty-four.
Twenty.
Yeah, twenty-four, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so I'll wait till we get to twenty-four, unless we're gonna go to twenty-four now.
I'm on twenty-four as well.
Okay, so let's go to twenty-four. So the problem with that sentence is that, the city will explore allowing integrated housing, right? So we just need to change that, so you would, we'll, we'll explore integrating housing into some.
Integrating.
That's the third paragraph.
Yeah, that's just, that's just, that immediately, I knew that.
That wasn't the intent, I think.
So, thank you.
Um, I have a comment on that, that same paragraph, the last sentence. It says, when housing available is often not, often not in South Burlington. The stats on that are that the commutes for people commuting to South Burlington are actually shorter than in Vermont as a whole, and very, very few people have long commutes. And the ones that do probably choose to do that because they wanna live in rural areas. I don't, I don't think the facts support. This is from housingdata.org, two thousand twenty-one, did. What's that? Well, it's actually in the packet.
Okay, I'm sorry, do we deal with Tim's question, because we jumped.
We did.
So what did we do?
We're, we're changing, uh, disable explorer, allowing integrated to disable explorer, integrating housing into some currently commercial.
Okay, alright, I got it. Okay, and Andrew, what is your?
I wanna delete that last sentence to that paragraph.
In that same paragraph?
It's accurate. But I think it's generally true that if people can't afford, if they have a job here and they would like to live here, but they can't afford to live here, they're gonna live outside.
Yes, but when you look at the actual commutes. Right, 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 right now, the stats are that our communities are not significant, there's very few people.
I know a lot of people live. People, I mean, anecdotally, from St. Albans to Swan to Highgate, that come down to South Burlington, from Georgia, from Milton, but all over.
Often, and that's not the stats.
Yes, well, if we're not gonna be declared, declared, we should at least mention that, you know, there is a, there's a correlation.
Alright.
Housing is cheaper further away from Chippewa County.
Right.
Sure is.
Right. Um, so the.
Or should say less expensive.
This is a very complex issue, because we are so desirable. People come from out of state, we heard from a lot of people who have home offices and work from their homes here tonight. And they come from out of state and buy homes here and are working in New Jersey or Massachusetts or. Um, and it is, it is a real challenge, I don't know how we solve that.
Well, I'm just thinking about the words, so, I mean, if folks like this sentence, it should be softened, it should say something like, housing may not be in South Burlington, may require.
I, I could go with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
It should be softer, 'cause I just don't think the stats support that sentence.
So make it softer. And, and I, I think it is significant to see that there are telecommuters that live in South Burlington. And I would even add that, that we have become attractive to telecommuters. And therefore, people who have to drive to their work are competing with telecommuters for, for housing. And often, you know, they lose out, because people who make their salaries out of Vermont make more money than people who make their salaries in Vermont, let's be really clear.
And help with their climate action mitigation goals, 'cause they're not driving their car.
But they're not contributing necessarily to our economy, they're not producing here.
They're paying a lot of taxes in Vermont, I can tell you that much.
Well, they're paying. They are doing that. But they're keeping other people out of our city who work here, and, and that's, that's a concern. It is, it is something that is a factor. I mean, I'm certainly not turning anybody away, but it is. Is there anything else on twenty-four?
My next comment is twenty-five.
Okay. Can I just, I know, can I just get a sense of how much more time we're gonna keep spending on this?
I can, I can go through this in ten minutes.
Well, yeah, right, as long as no one comments on it. But.
I think the rest is gonna go faster.
Okay, so if, if there's not, and you're done, right? I have one, one more thing.
One or two.
Okay. Well, how about if we work on this till ten, 'cause we still have a rather quickly conversation in executive session.
Let's do it in twenty minutes, that sounds good.
Yeah, twenty minutes, okay, so.
So let's dive in, page twenty-five. The theme of connectivity, I don't have, I, it's sort of something that ties the paragraph about the airport to our climate action. So I can read that, or folks can see.
Would you read it, 'cause I just.
Sure, I'll use the paragraph, no, it's a sentence, it's just, this says that.
And where are you putting this?
Yeah.
Under Lady Burlington International Airport.
Kind of, it talks about.
But which paragraph?
That city and airport need to work together.
Oh, okay.
This should include utilizing the land for projects for the community, support airport-like businesses, approve transportation. And I wrote, and work together to ensure the airport is reducing its greenhouse gas emissions consistent with the city's goals. Well, they've got their own plan in.
They have their own plan.
Burlington, right. But they're in our town.
I know, I know. Um, and their plan, I will tell you, does not really include the airlines per se.
Which is fine, our plan.
Control over that, so they're looking at their own.
That's scope three, and so that's fine.
Okay.
Um, and that would be consistent with our plan to exclude that too. Um, so I'm, you know, I mean, that is what it is, it's a problem of all airports, I can say problem.
So do you, I mean, they have a, a plan, you, do you want?
Just wanna reference.
Are you expecting that, that plan, if there's parts of it that don't line up with ours, that they should change it? Or you just wanna know what the plan is and see?
I just wanna say we should work together. And, I mean, maybe they're doing a great job with their, with their comments.
Well, and work together and collaborate with climate action plans?
Yeah.
I think maybe the, I'm okay with that.
Private air, air, the, the, the private plane, uh, community could work with us perhaps, or the, that part of the airport's business?
General aviation.
General aviation.
Get into that quagmire, if you wanna say, you know, aspire to work together to make our, our climate action plans collaborative in some way, you know?
I just wanna, just need to speak to each other about our.
A little bit of, we, we still need to reference the climate action.
Well, we could say collaborate and communicate about our plan, so they're aligned.
I have nothing against that.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, I mean, we're already losing, uh, JetBlue and Delta is reducing also. Is it Delta? It's reducing, so, but I don't wanna play along with, play around with the commercial, but I'm willing to do that with private.
Okay. My next comment's on page thirty-five.
So anyone reading four thirty-five now?
I have a twenty-seven, yeah.
Okay, let's go to twenty-seven.
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 Second paragraph, Green Mountain Powers low-carbon electricity supply. Now, on a given day, you can look at Icelandland and it's not low-carbon. Where, where are you exactly? Second paragraph.
Third line down.
Green Mountain Powers low-carbon electricity supply. Alright, so I don't wanna argue about this for, for more than thirty seconds, but if, if you could just say Green Mountain Powers supply, electricity supply, period. I mean, I know there's a lot of other details within that, but I, I don't want to just say that Green Mountain Power is a low-carbon electricity supply, 'cause then you're talking about, are you talking about, you know, energy credits, are you talking about actually generation, are you talking about how much reporting from, from Boston? 'Cause when Jerry Silverstein gets on his pedestal, he's gonna say, it don't matter where you are, the electrons are all coming from all the same nodes. And when, and in February, when the diesel generators fire up, right, and they're using fuel oil, right, to operate and throw in it at a hundred thirty dollars megawatt hour, right? Yeah, low-carbon, the, the reason why.
Okay, you ten seconds are up.
So what did you wanna say instead of low-carbon?
No, it is low, can I just, ten seconds, the reason why it's wrong is when we in South Burlington move from fossil fuels to electricity, that new supply by GMP will be carbon-free, that new increased supply to the grid, that's the important thing.
We had, we're an exporter twice this year of, of power, for probably a small period of time on a nice, cool, sunny day in May. And we are gonna grow more power, okay? But Green Mountain Power's responsibility is to keep the state fully electrified and supplied, right? Most of the time, they are not low-carbon when there's, when, when we don't have enough supply.
One hundred percent of their new supply to the grid is carbon-free.
Well, that's the important thing, yeah, that's the important thing.
But their current supply.
No, but that's the important thing, this is about transitioning.
Then say future, future low-carbon, yeah.
System to electric system.
Said, put future in there, Green Mountain Powers' future low-carbon electricity supply. Future's not the right word, let me just, it's not.
Okay.
We don't want people like Jerry to get a misunderstanding too, I think it's important to be really accurate here.
I think it's accurate to make sure you understand how much carbon's coming out of the Iceland grid, period, okay?
That's not relevant to our.
How about increasingly low-carbon, increasingly low-carbon electricity?
No, they're a hundred percent carbon-free new supply, and that's a critical thing.
Unless we go in high-demand mode.
That, that's such an important concept, that when we transition from fossil fuels to electric, that new supply is a hundred percent carbon-free. That's the basis of the climate action plan, the basis of the whole figure electrification, it's really important to state that clearly.
So how do you state that here?
Let's say Green Mountain Powers, um, it's gotta be something that says it's decline.
Why aren't we gonna say, instead of such as in that little parenthetical, we should say, um, in South Burlington, we're fortunate that all new supplies sourced by green power, power will be a hundred percent carbon-free, all new sources.
Oh, okay, that's better, sure.
Okay, okay.
I'm willing to go with that.
Thank you.
That sounds good.
Alright, good. That was twenty-seven. What's your next one?
Twenty, no, thirty-five.
Provence, it's laughing.
I'm sorry, what page? On thirty-five, whoa-hoo.
Goal thirty-four, one is a typo contiguous, because it U. Thirty-five? Thirty-five.
We're goal thirty-five.
No, no, page, page five.
Thirty-five.
Goal thirty-four.
Oh, excuse me. Protect at least.
Goal, yeah.
And I would like to change the word protect to permanently conserve.
Send page thirty-five.
Goal thirty-four.
Yeah, goal thirty-four.
First goal.
Yeah. Is that really doable? I mean, I don't know how we can.
Well, it's already, we're, thirty-one says it's already protected, I think there's no goal.
Oh, okay.
Right, so what, what, what's our goal?
Turning it, okay, so this is turning the protected lands into permanent.
Into conservative, yeah.
I would support that. Right, as long as we're not talking about, you know, a goal that says we're gonna protect your land, whether you want it or.
Oh, no, 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 this land is already protected.
Well, you're wrong, bad choice, but, um, for example, so, so let's hear the background, I wanna hear the background to this goal thirty-four. Can Kelsey or Paul, you provide the background to that goal?
Um, sure, so goal thirty-four, the fifty-one percent of the land area is correct, that it, that is something that had, that's the amount of land that has some type of protection on it. It does include, um, private conservation, permanent conservation, um, but also regulatory conservation. So it, it includes things like the SEQ NRP, habitat blocks, there are the big.
Condo association land.
Condo association lands would be private, privately-held land.
That are not developed, or that are not to be developed on?
It's, it's, that's the tricky thing, so fifty-one percent includes all of those things.
Oh.
Um, so it includes, like, if a condo association has HOA land that is designed to be open and designed to be common space for, you know, green space or recreation or whatever it happens to be for.
We can't protect that.
Right, right, so I, I think.
Well, and in many cases, it probably used the density.
Yeah.
At the time, we didn't go and look for every, you know, ten square feet of grassland. But in developing this number, the data we have is not good enough to say, oh, in this instance, there's not the ability to have ten more homes. We can't make a statement that's significant about what we can say is the DRB approval or planning commission approval from thirty years ago, identified that as open space, whether they could come back and under different rules, propose to amend it as an association, it's, that's too granular for what we were able to do here.
But, but if, if we're just, if the goal is to permanently, permanently protect it, you could work with the private landowner to get them to permanently, so if it's a condo association or whatever, maybe there's a tax break, I don't know, but.
Maybe what the planning commission was trying to do was to, that they were wrestling with the same thing that you're wrestling with here, which is, they wanted to say, here is its current status, and using Helen's example, it is the objective of the city to, um, make more permanent where not permanent. And they were sort of trying to find the right words, I think that that's not the right word. But that's, they were trying to distinguish that which is from what the goal is, so however you want to word that.
Um, permanently protect at least fifty-one percent of the lands of the city's land area.
That's fine, I, I use the word permanently conserve, but permanently protect.
Or permanently conserve is fine, I don't care, but, and that's the goal. If we can't do it, 'cause it's privately owned, we can't do it, so we can't reach, we can only get to forty-eight percent or something, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't wanna scare anybody.
Yeah, I think it sounds a little bit too, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's final.
If it's privately-owned land, I certainly don't wanna say we're gonna. Well, we're not saying that, we're just saying.
We wouldn't have the ability to do that.
We are.
No, I mean, we wouldn't have the ability to do that.
Well, that's, so why are we stating it?
So you're, you don't wanna scare five landowners.
Did all of them?
Well, they're, they know five other landowners each.
Fifty percent of the population really supports.
We know five other landowners each, I mean, they, they're not living in a vacuum.
I like it the way it is.
I, yeah, I, I tend to not be ready to face that question, but we're two to two, so. We'll have Larry come in and tell us, you know, get on the horn tonight, no. Okay, what's next?
Next. Next page.
He hasn't sworn in yet.
I'm on page thirty-six.
Which, yeah.
Um, just act, first action forty-three, create city tree ordinance. Um, I think we mean, if it's what came before the planning commission, create, um, an ordinance that addresses tree protection in connection with development activity. Capitalize city tree ordinance is confusing to me, 'cause we already have a city tree ordinance, right? So I think we just need to clarify action forty-three a little bit.
Yeah, and this was also just for clarification drafted before the NRCC got some additional legal guidance that a tree or, like, an ordinance to accomplish what they wanted to do.
We would need a charter.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, goal, action forty, says periodically review environmental protection standards in the LDRs to implement the goals of the plan. In the climate action plan, we said something much more precise, and I copied it, we said revise our LDR, protect our remaining meadows, forests, grasslands, and farmlands from further encroachment as permitted by law. And I think that what is in the climate action plan is a better and more powerful way to say action forty.
We're, this is your discussion.
I thought, it looked like you're both thinking. Okay.
You're gonna.
Oh, attorney, I know.
At least you needed the after goals of.
Sure. Well, are, are we okay with using the same language as the action plan? I mean, all of these things are supposed to be in the lens of climate action, right? So using the same language would. Darker than that lens or focus. Well, why don't you look at that, what that looks like?
So my one recommendation, if you do go down that path, is to take a look at maps three and nine. Three is the landscape level conservation areas, and the map nine is the future land use map. And so we would recommend that however you decide to phrase that statement, that it is internally consistent with your land use, especially the land use, the future land use map. So if you have, um, some of those resources that are listed in there, and then your future land use map says, and this should be housing, commercial, industrial, whatever, you, you wind up with an internal conflict in the plan, which becomes challenging for future policymakers. So I think that's a statement that. So I think that's a statement that you may want to um be mindful of, either possibly adjusting the future land use map or possibly adjusting the statement. So that they are connected to each other and internally consistent, so that two years from now, we're saying, wait a minute, why does it say two things that are counter to each other?
Yeah.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Next.
Page forty nine, real quick. Um again, uh in the in the airport thing, just uh reference to the climate action plan.
Thirty four.
I'm on forty nine, forty, just, I'm not gonna read it. So I said something like, Sydney Airport must continue work closely together to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Um in that air transportation section.
I I see that really for, yeah, the zoning questions around the airport. I totally support this this language.
Page fifty five. Can we back up just a second?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, go back to page forty five. Is there a little typo there? It says logically connect, action sixty six, logically connect the south lane and path and lane network. Do you mean the bike path?
What are you looking at? I'm sorry.
So page forty five.
Which action?
Page forty six.
Action sixty six.
Okay. Roger, five, action sixty six.
You do mean it was certainly a bike path and wrecked lane network, two networks?
I think this is supposed to be.
I was just gonna say, it's a little bit tricky, because we call them shared use paths. And and it's generally bike lanes, so we just sort of collapsed those to be kind of path and lane as as alternative transportation.
Okay, that's clear.
Alright.
So we we did the air transportation thing. What's next?
Fifty five. Um. Penultimate full paragraph. It talks about needing seven and a half acres per thousand residents, twenty acres of natural area per thousand. Could we get some stats on where we are, so we know how far we are or not from those goal?
Yes, thank you.
Next, a short discussion by just saying yes, and then we'll get back to you.
Thank you. Page eighty three is my next comment.
Why don't you start that sooner? Alright, mine's on seventy eight, so I'm gonna jump in here. So page seventy eight. Alright, I just wanna make sure, um, learning from our city center, and this is action one twenty seven. The develop vibrant streetscapes and public gathering spaces to enable events and community gathering.
Which program?
That is action one twenty seven.
Okay.
That that truly is gonna happen, because that was something that was, you know, potential here on on Market Street. And they could opt out um by doing something that. I I would say wasn't as um place, um you know, um producing or a sense of place was not gained by by how. They, the the choice they made. So I really want to make sure that that public gathering space um can happen. I just, is that some? So is that an LDR change? Or or form-based code or whatever?
There are elements in the, I mean, the.
Wouldn't it be?
It's a scale question, I think. So I think, you know, depending on the scale of a development, there may be the ability for a new neighborhood or development to accommodate. A gathering space, but often if it's just, you know, the the Pizza Hut, that may not have a gathering space. So there's likely a city investment component as well of creating large gathering spaces, maybe city investments in new parks or.
And I think that we could, you know, n- not necessarily um have conservation PUDs on Shelburne Road. But that, any new development should have a playground, some, I mean, there should be something.
And that is now requirement, subdivisions over six acres in size, um and then there's smaller ones that scale to site amenities for each, for each type of development. But that, and and so that is maybe a micro-scale gathering. If you're talking about large-scale gathering, there's likely a city investment component to it as well.
Right, right. Okay, so that, I can be sure that it's not, there's no loophole somewhere, that there truly will be. These gathering places.
I would just say that action one twenty seven includes both LDR, things that are in the LDRs that that bind new developments and developers. And also city planning and city investment. One of the things that's upcoming is um like a Parks Master Plan would be coming in the next year or so. Um so I think one twenty seven is phrased to include both of those things. Um and part of what what the role of the plan is, is to be able to make policy statements that enable changes to the LDR. So if additional changes to the LDRs are required, this action one twenty seven allows it to happen.
Okay, quarter of.
Quarter of.
Yeah.
Stop here.
Well, how many more are there?
I don't have any more.
What does some mean? How many? You know, lots? Oh, no, no.
I mean, are we gonna have more time to do this another, another time, or like, what's, I mean, we don't have to do it.
Well, what's your pleasure? It's quarter of ten. If you wanna slide through, but we still have. You know, our our executive session.
That's not gonna be slow.
And that that I don't think will be real slow. So.
Well, I mean, it's not gonna be fast. Is that what you meant?
So how many? You know, tell me, what's your pleasure? We can come back to this. We could have, what do you think? Um, half an hour at the next. Yeah.
Your next meeting is is very.
It was packed.
You do have a special meeting on the sixteenth for the public hearing, that we are not putting anything on but for the public hearing. So you could hold the public hearing and then have an additional.
Sure.
Council conversation. You should do that anyway, after you have the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you will have time.
So let's do that. Is that okay?
Yes, okay.
How many public hearings?
I mean, everyone has my comments.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
How many public hearings will we?
You'll have a minimum of two.
Two, two, okay.
So um you, if you make changes after, essentially after you've warned the final one.
Right.
Then you need to hold another one after.
Okay, so that's what we'll do.
Some of this, let me just say, some some of this, Paul, we can just talk about, I I couldn't square the numbers in here about solar and other things with the numbers in the climate action plan. Maybe we just talk offline and try and harmonize some of that.
Um if that's okay with um the rest of the council, um we, I saw the notes in there that may be conferring with Melanie about, is there a different source? Because.
Yeah.
The climate action plan uses one data set, and the state mandates a different data set, so, but certainly we're happy to, if that's, if the council is comfortable, um.
Not any policies, just getting these numbers to speak to each other.
On this solar gain of why there are two different numbers from the climate action plan.
That's fine.
And the climate action plan says we have like twenty megawatts renewable, this is thirty two. It's like the things are not speaking to each other.
Okay.
But did you catch the comment on page eighty four, that you wondered if it should be without, instead of with? I think that's important. So that's page eighty four, um that first full paragraph, uh six line down. The city has allocated certain areas of the city to remain unbuilt, and it says with significant development, or I just wonder if it should be without, and I I don't.
I don't know what that sentence meant.
Uh I think it's supposed to be without significant development.
Okay. Good catch.
I think it's.
I read the plan.
It's an acknowledgement that there are some rural homes in rural areas, so it's not one hundred percent absolutely nothing. But it is effective, it is, it's a conservation area, but. Okay, yes, I'm happy to have an offline conversation, but I think I understand your question.
I mean, if you, if you do, I mean, yeah, the things I circled were the things that didn't speak, that didn't coordinate, so.
Yeah, so if there's anything that um that is, we'll be happy to reach out to you if there's anything that is.
Okay, I mean, and the plan, you know, specifically focused on putting solar on the purview, it's not on agriculture, it seems to like flip it. So I think the two things need to speak to each other.
Some of the challenges, the state mandate to become an enhanced energy plant, you have to, you have to talk about it in certain ways.
We recognize that, and we did that with Melanie in the in the climate action plan.
Yes.
Anyway, we can talk some more.
Okay. Yes, Jesse.
So one, I just wanna say, I I know that this was kind of a heated conversation, which was not heated, but a an active conversation, which is great. One, well done for reading through the full company and city plan and spending so much thoughtful time with it. That is a huge. That makes me feel really good of how invested you all are on, all are in it. Um two, I think even though it was a um robust conversation, I think you really are focusing on typos, focusing on. A few policy changes here and there. I think generally that reflects a huge amount of positive work that.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
The planning commission have done over the last couple of years. So I don't wanna lose how proud I am into the. Doing that work.
Yeah, I think we're on page eighty four in an hour and a half or so. After, yeah, how many months you've been doing this? Yeah.
The planning commission doesn't whip through quite this soon.
What were the circled things on this map at the end here, the transportation?
Ah, I thought, I mean, this may not be the appropriate time, but this um.
I know, we were so close.
Now. It indicates roads in places where I either think they don't belong or will not be built, and at some point, we should talk about this stuff.
Which map are you talking about?
Well, map six.
Oh, map six.
So I don't know, this is the opportunity of the plan or the different points.
Because. That same map, I would say, I would love for Skier Street to become a place where we could eventually have a bus, a GMT bus line.
Okay, I mean, so I don't know when we as a council get an opportunity to talk about maps like this, but that's why I circled this.
Yeah, well, it's the same plan that I I had kind of liked to, I would love, and I think people would like to be able to take the bus going north to south. That's what that conversation with Michael Scanlon that you always speak this about.
He's doing a bang-up job, by the way.
Yeah, I can believe it. He was in Croatia, right?
Yeah.
Nice country. Okay, so moving on, we now have.
We take a motion?
Like a motion?
Or is it, you you have to do other business first, is it?
Oh, is there any other business? I thought the other business was that. I don't think so. Good work. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, a motion?
Yes, so um I moved that the council makes a specific finding that premature general public knowledge of the council's discussion. Confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the council clearly places public body at a substantial disadvantage.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I now move that the city council enter into executive session under one DSA three thirteen A one F for the purpose of discussing confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the council. Inviting Jesse Baker, Steve Locke, Paul Connor, Cal McHale, and you to social the council. This is Scott.
A second, all in favor? Aye. And we are not, we are not making any decisions, and we are not coming back.